Good evening. I'm going to call to order the City of Beaumont City Council meeting for Tuesday, August 1st, and we will begin with the roll call.
Can I have you call the time for the record, please?
I'm sorry, it's 6:03.
Councilmember Martinez?
Here.
Councilmember Roscoe is absent. Laura?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Carroll?
Here.
And Mayor White?
Here. Let's move to the Pledge Allegiance. Ms. Carroll, would you begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And for the invocation, we have Chaplain Odegaard here.
Shall we pray? God said, "If my people who are called by my name will humble themselves, pray and seek my face and turn from their wicked ways, then I will hear from heaven and will forgive their sins and heal their land." Our Father in Heaven, holy is your name. May your kingdom come soon. May your will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us today the food we need and forgive us our sins, and we have forgiven those who sinned against us. Don't let us yield to temptation, but rescue us from the evil one, for yours is the kingdom and the power and the glory forever. In the name of the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit, amen.
Do we have any adjustments to the agenda tonight? And any conflict of interest disclosures? All right. We'll move on to public comment period. Any one person may address the City Council on any matter not on this agenda. If you wish to speak, please fill out a public comment form provided at the back table and give to the City Clerk. There is three-minute time limit on public comments. There will be no sharing or passing of time to another person. State law prohibits the Council from discussing or taking actions brought up by your comments. Do we have anyone to speak tonight?
Yes.
I'll open the public comments at 6:06.
Judy Bingham, 115 Minnesota. I have a question for the Council members. That would be, which one is the forged audit? The City of Beaumont has produced three different versions of their audited financial statements by the auditing firm of Van Lant Fankhanel for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2015. The first audit was presented at the Beaumont Finance and Audit Committee meeting on December 19th, 2016. Finance Director Melana Taylor removed the auditor's report and internal controls report. The second, City of Beaumont 2014-15 audit, was approved by Council on February 7th. I was here for that one, Agenda Item 24, and I have the minutes of that meeting. The third audit is dated March 28th, and it re-adds into the financial statements the forged assets that were removed from the approved 2015 audit. The City of Beaumont has forged a version of their 2014-15 audit by re-adding the city's bonds as assets. To quote Fankhanel at the December 19th Audit and Finance Meeting, "It wasn't appropriate to show your own debt as an asset." The city never had any money to buy the bonds, and I remember Mr. Kapanikas saying, "The securities are the widows and orphans buy the bonds. We've asked for the securities; we've never gotten them." When a city acquires a bond, the money received is recorded as an asset. When the city spends the money building infrastructure, the cash from the bond is reduced, and an infrastructure asset is created or increased. Beaumont acquired bonds, but embezzled or misused all the money and never constructed any infrastructure asset or infrastructure to record its assets. The auditing firm of Van Lant and Fankhanel was hand-selected by former Finance Director William Howard, and I remember Nancy Carroll wouldn't let me come into that meeting; it was a closed meeting. She was the City Treasurer at the time, weren't you, Nancy? The auditing firm's business address is a house in a residential neighborhood. The Beaumont City Council unanimously approved another no-bid contract for Van Lant Fankhanel to audit the financial statements ending June 30th, 2016, before the 2015 audit was released.
Thank you. Next?
Roger Berg?
Roger Berg, Beaumont, California. I'm here to talk today about, I don't know why you guys got rid of Request Partners on the website. That system worked good for reporting complaints; you could upload pictures and anything else. I put a complaint back in May about a bunch of trash on Seventh Street, past Illinois, mattresses, pallets stored on the street in a trailer that was unhitched. The guy running a pallet-storing business, it still hasn't been taken care of. I went to code enforcement, and they said, "Well, we have to talk to property owner." It's an unhitched vehicle that's been on the street for over two hours; it's towable. I've got three pictures here. I just went by there tonight on my way here. The trailer's still sitting out there with pallets in it. It's a fire hazard. It looks like a Third World country down. This is right across from the new veterans home. Why am I concerned about this? I grew up in this area. I've got a little piece of property left down there; we sold most of it. But the thing of it is, is Request Partners works. What you've got now is a hodgepodge of things. I tried to use it. One was with the Powered by Ezra, and I tried to upload a picture; it wouldn't work. Another one, call code enforcement, this and that. That doesn't work. Why did you take away a system that worked? It kind of frustrates me. Maybe even money, I don't know, but, you know, this needs to be taken care of. Three months is too long to get something straightened up that should be done. And I'll leave the pictures there with the police officer, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
Ron Roy?
On the July 18th Council meeting, I brought up a concern I had about CFD 93-1 Improvement Area 19A, and I expressed my interest in having a pay-down or potential payoff for this improvement area, which currently has $20 million in outstanding debt. So, like, a handful of scenarios. And I appreciate that the Mayor directed Brian Forbath, who is the Bond Counsel for the City of Beaumont, to respond to my request. The reason I'm here today is I've submitted the documentation and formalized my concern in email to Todd Parton, and also to Brian Forbath. I briefly spoke to Mr. Forbath this weekend; he's on vacation, but I did want to have a written report. So, I've disclosed, I've given them an Emma report for the 19A, a 2015 disclosure report, which was used during the workshops, and also an April 23rd, 2015 staff report, which indicated how the refinancing occurred for our improvement area. So, we'd just like a follow-up. If I could push the rock a little bit, it would be perhaps really helpful if the City Council would be willing to put a one-paragraph request to Mr. Forbath. That would be fantastic, to reply to my request, and I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Mr. Roy?
Yeah.
I believe I saw an email that I was copying on back to you that said he would get to this as soon as he got back. You didn't get, did you not get that email?
Well, I, he has not got that. I have not received that.
Oh, I did. I'm sorry. I just thought I received it yesterday or the day before.
Okay, so if he is... I apologize if I didn't get that, so...
Okay.
Give him a little time.
Yeah, he'll get to you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Sure. Thank you.
No other speakers.
We'll close public comments at 6:13. Now, we'll move on to the consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar are taken as one action item unless an item is pulled for further discussion here or at the end of action items. Approval of all ordinances and resolutions to be read by title only. Are there any requests to pull? First of all, do we have any public comments on these items?
Yes.
Which one?
For 3, 4, and 8.
What was last?
3, 4, and 8. So, we'll pull those and address those after the rest.
I can't, I wasn't here. So, do I mean to pull it? 2? Or do I just...
You can just, you can just vote abstaining to item number 2.
I wasn't here for 2.
Okay. Are there any other requests up here to pull other items?
I just, I have a comment on 6, so if we could pull that.
Okay.
And a comment on 9.
And 9.
We just got a request to speak for 5.
For which one?
5.
Okay. All right. I will move that we approve Items 1, 2, and 7.
I'll second.
Councilmember Martinez?
I abstain from 2. That's all.
Yeah. Mr. Martinez?
Um, just to see if I have a question on that. No, I didn't. Yes.
Before Ms. Carroll answers, normally in the other boards I've sat on, the person can say, "I vote yes, but I'm abstaining from item 2."
Right, and...
We don't need to address it as a separate...
Carroll said that she abstained from 2, but she didn't indicate how she was going to vote, at least I didn't.
Okay, okay.
I just wanted to make it clear so it didn't get grouped. I vote yes.
Abstaining with number 2?
Abstaining from 2.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Laura?
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tim Carroll, do you want to...
Yes, abstaining from item 2.
Okay. Mayor White?
Yes. All right, so let's take item number 3, which is the approved addition of two bank accounts. We have someone who wants to speak on that one?
Yes.
Okay.
Want to go ahead and open the time?
I'm sorry. Open public comments for item number 3 at 6:16.
Thank you. Judy Bingham?
Judy Bingham, 115 Minnesota. The city is opening two bank accounts, but that's not enough. The city needs a separate bank account for the sewer authority, the transit authority, and each CFD that is established. You do understand that each CFD is a different district, right? I hope this Council does understand that while the bond profiteers are creating separate CFDs to circumvent voter approval, they are, in effect, creating separate districts, which means the funds cannot legally be commingled. The staff report states that the Finance Department has discovered the city must separate their funds. The city has no Finance Department. The Finance Department was removed from the budget in 2012. A city the size of Beaumont with over $300 million in bonds should have a highly skilled and experienced Finance Director, at least three more accountants, and six to eight account techs. Council just approved the 2017-18 budget, but there is no Finance Department, and not one member of Council directed their staff to set a proper budget. You all just went along.
Mr. Parton, can you address the part about the budget and the Finance Department, unless that is out of context of this item? Mr. Patterson, is it okay?
We're talking about the two bank accounts.
Right.
Question concerns whether the budget contains appropriations for a Finance Department. So, it really doesn't concern this matter, but at the same time, it is appropriate for the staff to make a brief response, but not to engage in a complete...
Okay.
...discussion. So, if it can be addressed in a few words, I don't think it would be appropriate.
Okay. Please go ahead, Mr. Parton.
Yes, we do have a Finance Department. We have a Director, and we've got three additional staff in that department. So, there's a staff of four. The costs for that are, in this year's budget, covered underneath the administration allocations in our city budget.
Okay. Thank you. And Ms. Taylor, can you respond to why, or not respond, but tell us why you're asking for two additional bank accounts to be established?
The first account that we're asking to have established is so that we can segregate the funds for construction as we receive grants or other proceeds that are supposed to be spent specifically for construction projects, to keep it separate, to keep it accounted for properly, and that will then coincide with our project accounting that we're beginning this year as well. The second account is so that we can segregate the public safety funds that are held in trust, one being evidence, which is held when a subject is arrested. If they're holding cash, it has to go to the bank. We also have federal occasionally, and we have state seizure funds, which have to do with larger operations that are undertaken, and if there's cash in that particular event, it has to be held into a segregated bank account. And we've decided to make it a different account entirely, only for the ease of use for our public safety officers. There is a little bit of difficulty in using the bank that we have for our general fund, and we're going to be using a local bank to hold the seizure funds. It makes it a little bit easier for them to work with.
Okay. And before I open up for questions and comments from Council, do we have any other speakers on this item? So, let me close the public comments at 6:19. And does anyone else have questions or comments for staff? Ms. Taylor, I'm sorry.
Yes.
So, can you speak to the comment that we should have a lot more bank accounts opened other than these two?
There's not a specific requirement to hold some of the accounts in completely segregated bank accounts. The requirement is that we account for them in segregated funds, which we've done. We have all of those segregated based on what kind of fund it is, and we've broken down the detail a great deal in our new general ledger system that we're just about ready to unveil for everyone. The funds are tracked separately. For our CFDs, we're moving to where those funds will be properly advanced to the trustees, so the cash that'll be shown will be held at the trustee level, except for administrative costs, which are incurred by the city ongoing for different tasks that we have related to the CFD. But the cash doesn't necessarily have to be physically segregated unless it's for grant funds, where the grantor says that we must, or there's some other legal requirement. But we do not have any of those presently.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Martinez?
So, you're saying that we have an account, but within that account, we have segregated funds within that?
Correct.
Okay, so there's no need to have several accounts, just as long as each of those funds are accounted for within the account?
Right. So, it's one, they call it pooled cash. So, it's one physical bank account, and then we have to, in the Finance Department, have to know where the funds belong and know when we spend it, which one of those funds we're changing. And we have it set in the new general ledger system where we can do some automatic calculations within that and always know how each fund sits with their cash balance.
And I believe, from what I've seen or heard, that general ledger, we will be detailing funds by improvement area, not just the whole CFD as 193-1 district?
Right. We're working on that because there are some specific allocations that we need to determine in order to get those numbers properly segregated between improvement areas, but we are poised to do it. We just need to put some mechanisms in place to capture the information properly.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments? Ms. Carroll?
And this is all part of that continued effort that you started about a year ago, a little bit more with new software and new accountability, all things that were not in place before.
Correct.
So, it's a remarkable change from the way we've accounted for CFD funds, construction project funds, things like that, and it's all part of that significant improvement.
Right. It will make the accounting detail much larger, but it will be able to give you the information you need much easier, and it will be separated by type of fund, type of project.
Thank you. Without objection, I'm ready to entertain a motion for item number 3.
We'll make a motion to approve item 3, the addition of two bank accounts.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Laura?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Carroll?
Yes.
And Mayor White?
Yes. Item 4, do we have speakers for item 4?
Yes.
I'll open public comments on item 4 at 6:24.
Judy Bingham?
Judy Bingham, 115 Minnesota. I've put in a record request because I had a question on the sewer, the pending purchase Watershed authority, what watershed authority? I wish there'd been a little more detail on which one. So, should I wait till my request is answered, or is anybody able to answer it here? And that is, which watershed authority? And I also want the backup for it. Does anybody know which watershed authority?
Ms. Bingham, if you're finished with your comments, I'll ask Ms. Taylor to address that.
Okay.
Ms. Taylor, can you address, it looks like there's a watershed authority and a Santa Ana watershed. There's two purchase orders that I'm seeing under sewer for that.
Correct. What we did in putting together the requisition and purchase order system is to try and recognize at the beginning of the year certain costs that we know we're going to incur during the year for specific things or for vendors where we have more generalized expenses. So, that's what the staff report is in total. When we looked specifically at the sewer, in the past, there have been three different groups that payments have gone to related to sewer membership task force groups. So, we went ahead and put in all three purchase orders so that they are standing and ready if and when the invoices arrive. I believe that one of them is related to Lake Elsinore Canyon Lake and somebody else, where they have fees. We have the Santa Ana watershed fees, and then we also have the State Water Department that has fees that we have paid in the past. If the purchase order is sitting, it doesn't mean that we'll make those payments unless we get an invoice. If the invoice then has no correlation to that purchase order, then we would have to revisit that. This only reserves funds for contemplating the future invoice being received by the city.
Okay. Any other questions? Can you respond to, Ms. Bingham, with the clarification on those watersheds in her public records request?
I can provide what we've paid in the past, which is what we base the purchase order on. We don't have invoices yet. This is just a press...
No, I'm just saying which purchase order goes...
To which one?
Exactly. If you could determine that for her and let her know.
I will do that.
Appreciate that.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. I will move to approve item number 4, approval of pending purchase orders in excess of $10,000.
I'll second.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Laura?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Carroll?
Yes.
And Mayor White?
Yes. Item 5, I guess I should close public comments at 6:27. Item number 5, do we have anyone to speak on that one?
Yes.
So, I'll open public comments on item number 5 at 6:27.
Ron Roy?
Why am I here on this item number 5? It deals with approval of $28,000 for our participation in a TMDL task force. So, why am I here? Well, I wanted to just think out loud for a minute. My understanding is that where we live in the San Gregorio Pass, we have the Santa Ana watershed, we have the Santa Margarita watershed, and the Coachella Valley watershed, which are within 100-mile radius. But what directly affects our pass area is the Santa Ana River watershed. And I'm concerned as to why we're participating in this. The Santa Ana watershed has two major tributaries. The main one for us, if not the only one, is the Santa Ana River. The Santa Ana River and the headwaters for that river directly relate to us because all the creeks here in Beaumont are headwaters to the Santa Ana River. So, we have Cooper's Creek, we have Noble Creek, we have Edgar's Creek, we have Casco Creek. Those all relate. All the water we get from groundwater comes from the headwaters to the Santa Ana River. Now, one of the major kind of tributaries with a small "T" is San Timoteo Creek. So, you have our kind of passary creeks feeding into San Timoteo Creek, then to the Santa Ana River, which is far and away, if you were to measure the amount of water flow to the river, I would probably say 70% of the water comes from the Santa Ana River. So, now, we're paying $28,000 to the San Jacinto River, which granted is a part of the Santa Ana River watershed, but we have absolutely no benefit that I can conceive of from this water. We are not members of the Eastern Municipal Water District, and all of the headwaters and tributaries to the San Jacinto River come from the San Jacinto Mountains. So, that would be, for example, Popet Flats and all of the foothills to the San Jacinto, from San Jacinto to Highway 74. Maybe, and our south-facing foothills in the Procheiro Reserve, we might have a few. The bottom line is, we get no water. All our water's from passary water agencies, right? We get not a penny from Eastern Municipal. This $28,000 is going for research into Canyon Lake and Lake Elsinore. We do not benefit. If Lake Elsinore and if the other Canyon Lake want to give us $28,000 when we need to do our TMDL for San Timoteo Creek, then that's put pro quo. And I think we really need to start looking at that. Why are we paying for something we get absolutely no benefit from? So, like I say, and we're paying more than all the cities, if you look at the report. Thank you.
Could I comment on that, too?
Sure. Did you fill out a form?
No, but I'll fill out afterwards.
That's okay.
Okay. That's, hang on a second, Mr. Berg. Did we have anyone else to speak on this?
No.
Okay. Go ahead.
Roger Berg, Beaumont, California. I wasn't going to speak, but Mr. Roy's right. I spent 40 years working for the Army Corps of Engineers. Lake Elsinore, Temescal Creek, and all of them do not, any of our water flows from there. And he's absolutely right. Anything that comes out of our sewage treatment plant does not flow into Lake Elsinore. Anything that may flow out of the reserve that's on there as part of the city, we're not producing anything, or it's natural runoff. I can't ever recall when I was on the Council, us paying any money for Lake Elsinore and Canyon Lake. We took care of stuff that had to deal with our watershed flowing into the Santa Ana River through San Timoteo Creek, Cooper's Creek, and as such, and all the stuff that come through Cherry Valley and down through Beaumont. So, I don't get it. I think Mr. Roy has got something there.
Is there anyone else scheduled to speak?
No other speakers.
Okay. I'll close public comments at 6:31. So, who gets to address this one?
Honorable Mayor and Councilmember, the questions that are raised, you know, those are legitimate questions. Why are we paying $28,000 to clean Lake Elsinore and other lakes that are not in the city? But what it is, is that we're part of a watershed that feeds into that basin, and our water does end up there. And Santa Ana River Regional Water Control Board has a basin amendment that controls how much total solids go into those lakes. And instead of doing this effort where we have to do a study to provide what kind of flow and what kind of contaminants we're sending there, we're doing, this is done jointly. So, the study is a joint study between a bunch of different agencies, and that saves us money. So, we would still have to do the reporting under that plan. It's just that by combining the effort, we're doing one report. We're paying into this effort that does the reporting. It comes out cheaper for us. But it's a mandate by the state for us to make sure we comply with the plan, no different than we are in the other basin, and we comply with those plans. So, it's part of our duty as part of being in the basin is to comply in the plan. It's not our job to clean the water. I think our job is to submit all the reports that we're doing. The water that ends up there, if it's contaminated... reports that we're doing. The water that ends up there, if it's contaminated by other agency, then they will clean that water. If we're contaminating the water, then that's our job to clean our water. But in this case, that's what we're doing. We're trying to study and make sure that we're not sending contaminated water down to that area. So that's the reason, and since we're party to that, we are supposed to participate in that effort.
Any comments, Mr. Martinez? And that's, so regardless of whether we're using it more than anyone else, just because we're contributing to that, that's where the money's coming.
That is correct.
And why is it, Mr. Roy brought up a point, why is it that our total seems to be a little higher? Is that because it goes on how much we contribute? Because I couldn't tell. It didn't look like it was related to population size or anything like that. So is there a formula or something?
I don't recall what the formula is, but there is a basis for everybody having that. So it's been decided what that percentage is, and that we're paying that percentage.
Yeah, but our.
But I can get that information.
Well, it was just our seemed to be a little higher than some of the other cities. Some of the other cities on the list were bigger than us, paying less, and.
I believe it's based on the size of the area, attributing size of the area, but I can find out for sure exactly what.
I just want to make sure we're doing a fair share if we have to pay. We must make sure we're not overpaying, I guess.
I had a question about the amounts also. I couldn't figure out any, any pattern that made any logic on these amounts. And I was hoping that maybe we had called to find out why these amounts were assigned to us. It didn't seem, again, I thought a population too. I couldn't match it to population. I couldn't, I'm not sure area size is, are we sure it's area size, or we really don't know yet?
These types of charges are based on the area and not the population. It's mostly.
So you are sure it's physical, footprint, physical area size?
I will verify. I will verify that and find out why our share is that, and I can pull that back at the next meeting.
Is this a speaker that indicated that this hadn't been done before? Is this new to this watershed, or is this an annual report, or is this done every 10 years, or?
There's a continued effort to do this, and it's been going on for a long time. This is not the first year. We've paid into it last year as well, when I remember doing the same invoice last year as well. There's a budget set up, and there's some staff time that's charged to it, and there's some other studies that are done. So there's a budget for that, and that's how they base this charge on.
Okay, thank you.
Is this a voluntary organization? Are we required to be part of this organization?
We're not. We're part of the basin. Our job is to comply with the plan. We don't have to be with them. We can independently do that. We can independently do the study and comply with the plan. So as long as we're complying with the plan, that's fine. I think it'll be more expensive for us to do independently and then take on the responsibility of having to comply with that plan.
So complying with the plan, we are not reporting on Lake Elsinore Canyon Lake's waters. We're reporting on the waters that are coming out of the city of Beaumont. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And so we're providing them with information that we are required to provide them with, to take into account what everyone else is putting into the same Santa Ana Regional Water Control Board watershed?
We're providing them funding to collect the information. We're not actually collecting the physical information and giving it to them.
Okay. But what I'm saying is, if we didn't pay, then we would need to do that ourselves, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And you're saying here that it's cheaper for us to do it as a group rather than to do it individually?
That is correct. And also affect and to be part of the group to make sure if there's any changes that need to be affected, we have a voice there. Or if there's other additional regulations that they want to impose, we have a voice. They were there.
Okay.
And there's a meeting held every, I believe, there's a two or three meeting held a year, and we're there, present at those meetings.
Okay. And in here, it says that this has been going on since 2004, I believe, 2005? Is that correct?
Yeah, it's been going on since then.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments for staff? Thank you, Mr. Tucker.
Make a motion to approve item five.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Laura?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Carroll?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes. Item number six, do we have public comments for item number six?
No.
All right. So we'll go straight to the item number six, which is the award of contract for traffic signal maintenance and emergency signal maintenance to St. Francis Electric LLC for fiscal year 1718. Who pulled this one?
Yeah, I did.
Okay.
Mayor, I had this one pulled. When you grant extensions on contracts that have initially gone through an RFP, I understand that there is a cost savings. The only reason I asked that this be pulled was, I would still like contracts of this magnitude to be placed on the agenda rather than the consent. This will, I think, allow input, more input from constituents as well as council. And that's just my request. If you can do that in the future.
Any other comments? Would you like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve item six.
I'll second.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Laura?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Carroll?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes. Any public comments for item number eight?
Yes.
Okay. I'll open public comments at 6:39.
John Hollywell?
I would like to apologize before I say what I'm going to say, because I may be looking too critically at the issue. I think it's great that we're doing this process, but there's two little idiosyncrasies that I think maybe need to be considered a little bit more. We have three positions on the committee that are elected officials. One of those is elected for a four-year term. We're talking two-year appointments, and it seems to reflect in, as I read the document briefly. Also, city council, their terms of election are such that they will actually have expired, depending on when they were elected, by the January date. So I thought you might want to look at the terms of offices as they relate to the two-year term that we normally talk of for the position. That's the critical part. The part that I have to say tongue-in-cheek is, I will not be seeking reappointment. And the reason for that is, we will probably be moving sometime before the next appointment date. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hollywell.
And it also means that I will, because of that, possibly resigning from the other positions that I hold with the city.
Okay, thank you. I noticed that on both these items, item eight and nine. I believe when we originally, Mike, you might be able to help me with this, when we originally established these committees, the concept of the elected officials was that every December, we have a reorganization of council, and at that time, we make appointments or assignments to all these committees, and that that would be addressed at that time by the council as to who serves on what committees. So I don't think that we need to put term, assign term dates to the elected officials. Is that the way you remember it?
Yeah, because we weren't sure how long those would be, and if we wanted to rotate at the time of January. If we could break those two out, just put as appointed by the mayor.
So this is actually calling for us to approve the appointment of terms for each committee member as presented. Does anyone else have any other comments about treating council members the way we suggested? Are you guys okay with that? With the council party, I just had a comment on the other members. On number eight? Well, yeah, because eight and nine are related, really. Okay. My only question is, is it that, are we going by the person or the seat? If a person is assigned for a two-year term, and they resign in a year, the new person that comes up that's appointed, that starts a new two-year term, or do they finish the term of that seat that was there?
They would finish the term.
I believe it's similar to what we do for planning commissioners. Okay, so it's finishing the term, so we're not always pushing it? Originally, we didn't know, we wanted two-year terms. We didn't know how to deal with it as far as put half the group on one year or three-year, and put the other half on two years. And so at that time, if I remember correctly, the plan was to get input from the committees and find out what they felt made the most sense. And I think that's why we're here. So is there any other comments or questions on item number eight?
If I can interject, just because I typed up this part, the intention of having the council members on there to expire in 2018 was to keep it as a one-year, because I know that you guys do reorganize every year. So the council members wouldn't switch to a two-year term. It would be on a one-year.
Oh, okay, because I did notice somewhere in here, you mentioned that these terms would coincide with the January city council reorganization. So we don't need to address the one-year for council members in?
Correct.
Okay. I'll move to approve item number eight.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Carol. Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Laura?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Carroll?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes. Do we have any public comments for item number nine?
No.
Okay. Same question? Yeah. Mr. Martinez? My only question is, I don't see Mr. Davis, Ballard, or McGraw here, but if you look at what we're asking them to do, we're asking them to serve a 33-month term. I'm just wondering if we had any comments from them upon that, because if we're going to reassign them or reappoint them to the new terms 2019, I believe, then if you go by when you have their appointment date, that would make it 33 months altogether. I was just wondering if they had any comment on that. That might be more than they were initially signed up for, but, you know, I don't.
Mayor and council, so in response to that, we tried to just get it to a January appointment date. So that was our goal as staff, is to get a certain amount of members to January of 2018 for a two-year term appointment, and then the remaining, another year on top of that to get to the 2019 date. Staff did notify the members of the committee of this proposed agenda item, and we've heard nothing since then. So hopefully that silence means that they read it and they're in full agreement. If not, I think we'll probably find out next week during the economic development committee when we tell them what their new term is. So we don't have any other issues that have arisen since then. Like Nicole said, we were trying to get the council member seats just to get to a January, and our goal for that was to have a staggered, so not every single committee member would be up for reappointment, or we'd be soliciting applications for the entire committee at one time, as well as to not have applications going for the committee year-round, because we would have different spots expiring on January and then February and April. So we wanted to kind of tie them all together at one time of the year, and we thought the perfect time for that would be when council is making their own appointments onto committees.
Yeah, I think it's a great approach. I really do. It's just, you know, just the exception of those three individuals, but it's worth a shot, I see. But anyone can resign at any point. Yeah. So if they don't want to serve the extra year, then we will address that. Mm-hmm. Okay. All right. Any other questions or comments? All right. I'll entertain a motion for item number nine. I'll second that.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Laura?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Carroll?
Yes.
And Mayor White?
Yes. So that finishes the items that were pulled from the consent agenda. We'll move on to action items. Public hearing request, item number 10, annual resolution directing the Riverside County Auditor Controller to place the levy of special taxes for the city's community facilities district on the fiscal year 2017-2018 county tax roll.
Good evening, Mayor White, members of council, Rich Wall, Haber, Web Associates. This item before council this evening is the annual resolution to approve the CFD enrollments on the county tax roll. Each year, the county tax collector requires a resolution, and council has approved the resolution to fill that requirement each year. Couple things to note different this year. We broke in the resolutions and the four resolutions, so that will allow for council members who reside within boundaries of the CFD to recuse themselves. So that would be one change. And then two, we have the good news of providing that this year's enrollment comes with a $2.5 million reduction in those special taxes that have been historically enrolled. And so staff and your team of consultants have left no stone unturned. We worked diligently to reduce those taxes with many improvement areas. And so this evening is the culmination of those events. So council and staff should be very proud of those achievements. I know from one of your consultants, essentially, we're proud to partake in that as well. So we prepared a short presentation for the council, just some key items. We'll go through this at any time. Please feel free to jump in, ask questions as you need to.
And then after the presentation and before council, comments will go to public records, our public speakers. Are there any public speakers for this one?
No.
Okay.
Makes it easy. So just a brief kind of statistics for the council. This year, the 1718 enrollment includes 37 improvement areas of CFD 93-1. You also have three of the newer form CFDs, 2016-1, 162, and 164. We just wanted to know that between those improvement areas, you have essentially 71 special tax calculations to be enrolled. So for all intents and purposes, you have 71 mini improvement areas. So again, just to focus on the robustness of the city's CFD program. The special taxes are collected each year. They're used to pay for the annual debt service of the principal and interest that are due on the bonds outstanding. Those proceeds are also collected for the maintenance services, which would include the lighting, maintenance, and landscape of your public, your city-owned streets, roadways, public parks, parkways, open space. There's also funds being collected for the public safety. So you have the newer CFDs, the 16-2 and 4, have a public safety component, and then as well as administrative expenses, and then the collection for future facilities or Pago as applicable. The changes, again, this year, is approximately $2.5 million in reductions. Those came through two means. First would be the refunding that everyone's well aware of at this point. So that brought basically $1.46 million in savings to eight improvement areas. The actual refunding included 10, but two of those are not fully bonded, so they wouldn't see those savings this year. But those savings would be available to the property owners once the final round of bonds are issued for them. The second round of savings came through the reduction Pago. So we looked at all of the CFDs and improvement areas that would be eligible for reduction, and we reduced that collective of Pago by 50%. So that impacted 19 improvement areas. I wanted to just touch basically on the word eligible. There's a footnote there that essentially to be eligible for the reduction, you had to be fully bonded and then fully developed. And so those are all included here in this year's enrollment.
And if you go back to that slide, the $2.48 million in savings, that is realized this year over a certain period of years. What's that $2.48 million represent?
That is this year alone. So you're seeing, and I'll go through the breakdown in the next slide here for you, but you're seeing the reduction in the debt service for the refundings, the improvements refunding, and then as well as the reduction in the Pago that would have been collected had we not implemented anything this year.
And you may have this in a future slide, but when we discussed this in previous meetings, we talked about just over 6,000 homes that are being affected by the reductions.
I do have that total for you. It's the last slide. I can skip there if you like.
No, no, no.
Okay.
Save the best for last.
Perfect. So this will help illustrate how the savings came about. And so what we have here is roughly, there will be 25,000 charges placed on the roughly 12,600 properties in the city of Beaumont this year. If you looked at your total budget from last year, the budget was 25.4 million. That was actually enrolled on the tax roll for 1617. The 1718 budget, had we done nothing at all, would have been $26.5 million roughly. That's the center column, 1718 original. What we will enroll in what's being proposed here before council this evening is the 1718 proposed, which is just over 24 million. And so what you're seeing is a 10% reduction in the required debt service that we needed to collect from the properties to make the annual interest and principal payments. And then additionally, you're seeing a. And then additionally, you're seeing a 17% reduction in the funds that we turned Pago this year. So one thing I do want to point out to council is we applied a great deal of reductions to as many improvement areas as possible, but there are some improvement areas that just weren't eligible. And so you'd see two reasons why you would actually have some improvement areas go up. So, one, the developing improvement areas such as the 2016-1 or AE of 93-1, those are still developing. So every year, you're having building permits pulled, and new homeowners coming in and paying the taxes. So you'll see that total go up each year for those improvement areas. The second would be those that are not fully bonded, so your 8C, your 8D, or 17C that has issued no bonds, they're going to continue to escalate annually as the RMA allows or requires for the annual escalation. So those two, the two flavors that you see increase, but for the most part, where we could reduce, we have. And then just as a note, those are on our radar, and when they become available, when we can implement what we've done here, those would be next to go. We will get those as soon as we can. So the next two slides are the detail behind those improvement areas are receiving reductions this year. And so I'm happy to provide as little or as much information here as council would like, but what I wanted to just touch on first, it's a lot of information, so just kind of the layout, what you're seeing on here, there's three sections. The top part is kind of the characteristics of the improvement area, so we have the improvement area number, the development name, the total number of parcels that are included, and then what percentage it represents of the total CFD in the city. The middle section is the final budget that is being used to drive the actual requirements for the special taxes. And then the bottom part's that reduction that we talked about. And so if I just look at the second row column here, 6A1 is an example, if we went down to the bottom, you're seeing here that we'd reduce the Pago by $53,000. The debt service as a result of the refunding was another 337. So this improvement area was seeing a reduction in $390,000 this year than it would have been had we not done any of those things. And so you're getting an average reduction per parcel of roughly $409 per property, or 14% reduction. And so there's a couple footnotes I just want to make reference to, that these are averages, so some property owners will see more, some people they'll see less, depending on where they land in the classification and the operating method of apportionment. So I'm not sure if you would like to save questions for Ann, I'm happy to kind of linger here for a little bit or just move through to the end.
I think we'll jump in if we have a question.
Perfect. So the next slide is the same thing, it's the rest of the improvement areas. And then what we have is a summary here, we mentioned some improvement areas that weren't eligible this year, so we've just summarized them here for reference. These are all falling into the same category, as either being undeveloped or not fully developed, not bonded, not fully bonded. And so represents roughly 27% of the CFDs properties. And again, as we, as these improvement areas fully develop, issue their full bonds, we'll do the same thing and apply reductions as we can to each of those in future years. And then the last slide was the summary, I know you asked Mayor White before for the total, so we wanted to give this for council for reference. We did the reduction in Pago, there's 8,700 properties, or roughly 69% of the properties in your CFD are receiving a reduction this year. 5,810 were a result of the refunding, or 46%. And then we have the no change was 3,400, or roughly 27%. And then there's a footnote on there, just if anyone's doing the math, these won't pencil to the total, that's because the first two rows, there's duplication, so you can be in both categories. So that concludes the presentation this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions now or as we go through the individual resolutions to recuse also.
Any questions or comments from council? I have a couple of questions for, I think for you and for Mr. Patterson. We'll start with Mr. Patterson. Three of us are council members who have, who are in CFD improvement areas. We followed the conflict of interest rules when we approved the refinancing refundings. To vote on this item tonight, my understanding, because it's covering so many people, that the three of us would not have a conflict of interest to vote on this, is that correct?
What we're doing is we've broken up the resolutions which authorize the collection of tax by the assessor into four separate resolutions. And so if you go through your package, the first resolution is one that all of the city council members are allowed to vote on without violating the conflict of interest clause. Then there's a second resolution, which in the first paragraph you'll see says that Councilmember White has accused himself of dissipation in this resolution with regards to improvement area 18. And then you'll see that the next resolution provides that Ms. Carroll has recused herself from the vote on improvement area 14 and 14A. And then finally, the fourth resolution provides that Councilmember Martinez is recusing herself from the vote on improvement area nine. And that is because, as pointed out by Mr. Wall, these resolutions are ultimately going to have the effect of...
These resolutions are going to have the effect of reducing, in many instances, the tax payments of the various city council members. So what we've done to reiterate is we've broken up the resolution so that the city council members who reside in improvement areas that are affected by the reduction in Pago and the refinancing of the bonds can recuse themselves. So basically, we would take these four resolutions in order, and on the first one, the council members all can vote, and then we would, after that, request that Councilmember White, Carroll, and Martinez recuse themselves, which would mean that they would simply state that I have a conflict of interest regarding this matter, and I'm going to leave the room, and then that individual would leave the room during that resolution, during the entire discussion, and vote on that matter.
So for a little clarification in your explanation, for years, probably 15, 20 years, these have come to council, and no one on council has ever recused themselves before. You had mentioned that this may be different because some of these parts, some of these improvement areas are getting reductions.
That's correct.
But just for clarification, I'm all in favor of doing it the way that you suggested, but just for clarification, improvement area 18, the area I'm in, as well as the improvement area that Mr. Martinez is in, I don't believe are receiving any reduction, is that correct?
I can address that, Mayor. Improvementary 18, yours is receiving a reduction, Mr. Martinez is not, improvementary nine is not.
And how is 18, what reduction is 18 receiving?
Reduction in the 50% Pago.
Okay.
And, Mr. Wall, what about 14 and 14A, is there going to be any sort of a reduction there?
Yes, 14A and 14 will both receive reductions as well.
Okay, but that wouldn't be the case for improvement area nine?
That is correct, nine would not.
Okay.
Okay. You know, just out of an abundance of caution, I think that Councilmember Martinez should recuse himself from the vote on improvement area nine. We have enough council members presumably to vote in favor of it, so, you know, it's better to be safe than sorry.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, and to address your question about why this wasn't done in years past, obviously I wasn't present at those meetings, so I can't comment specifically on what the rationale was, but I could speculate that it's, as you've pointed out, this year, there is a reduction due to the reduction in Pago that I don't believe has been applicable in past years. And then you have the refinancing of the bonds that is reducing the amount of the principal and interest that is payable by the homeowner. So this is a little bit of a unique situation this year that may not have occurred in the past.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? All right. So I will move to approve item 10, number one. Adopt a resolution that City Council, City of Beaumont, California levying the special tax in CFD number 93-1, 2016-1, 2016-2, 2016-3, 2016-4, and direct county auditor to collect the same on the tax rolls, 93-1, 2016-1, 2016-2, 2016-3, and 2016-4.
I'll second.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Lara?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Carroll?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes. On item number two, I have a home in improvement area 18, so I will recuse myself for item number two, 10.2.
So I will make a motion that on item two, we adopt a resolution of the City Council of the City of Beaumont, California, levying the special tax in Community Facilities District number 93-1, improvement area 18, and directing the county auditor to collect the same on the tax rolls of improvement area 18.
I'll second.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Lara?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Carroll?
Yes.
I will recuse myself from item number three, as I have property in improvement area 14 and 14A.
I will move to approve item number three. Adopt resolution, City Council, City of Beaumont, California, levying the special tax in CFD number 93-1, improvement area 14 and 14A, and directing the county auditor to collect the same on the tax rolls, IA 14 and 14A. I'll second.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Lara?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes. And we'll move on to item 10-4. I'd like to recuse myself from item 10, sub number four, since I have property in improvement area number nine. Would you like to take this?
Sure. I'll make a motion to approve item 10-4, adopt resolution of the City Council of the City of Beaumont, California, levying the special tax in the Community Facilities District 93-1, improvement area nine, and directing the county auditor to collect the same on the tax rolls in improvement area nine.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Lara?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Carroll?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes. All right, we'll move on to item number 11. Reject all proposals submitted in response to the request of proposals for construction management services for the Petrae Boulevard SR60 Interchange Project Phase One, issued on November 1st, I'm sorry, November 21st, 2016, and reissuance of a new RFP for said construction management services. Do we have anyone to speak on this one?
Yes.
Okay, let's go ahead and open public comments at 7:06.
Judy Bingham?
Judy Bingham, 115 Minnesota. As I have said since 2010, Petrae is a regional project between the county and the state, and should have never involved Beaumont. This project is nothing more than another excuse for the city to funnel taxpayer money out of the city. Beaumont is locked out of the bond market, and Petrae Interchange is part of the SEC investigation. The $13 million already expended on the project was embezzled out of Beaumont's CFD bonds and paid to Urban Logic Consultants up until February 2016. The city's only financial option is to acquire private bank financing for the Petrae Interchange. A bank is not going to loan money to construct an asset that will become the property of the state. The project would be much more feasible without Beaumont's participation. If Mike Bush was a real financial advisor instead of a bond salesman, he would have advised the city that Petrae is a regional project and a waste of tax, of Beaumont citizens' time and money. Now, we must start back at square one with a new RFP. I say this is a good time to admit that this is all a scam and kill the project. The city doesn't have the money, they will never get financing, and Beaumont staff has no experience operating within the law. Let the developers sue Mike Bush, Brian Forbath, and whoever Kyle Warsinski is working for to get their money back.
Any other speakers?
Yes. David Tiberry?
Mayor and council, my name is Dave Tiberry, and I'm with Trans Systems Corporation. We competed for the construction management contract for the SR60 Petrae Boulevard Interchange Project. We support your voting to cancel the requests for proposals for the project and re-advertise for the contract. Although our preference would be to win the contract, we understand the situation. In fact, we called it out to the attention of the city, so we appreciate city staff action on this matter. Trans Systems will compete again for this contract. We are confident that we will again demonstrate to the city of Beaumont that we are the best qualified consulting firm for the construction management of the SR60 Petrae Boulevard Interchange Project. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? We'll close public comments at 7:10. Before you come up, Mr. Pardon, the direction of this council was that no more taxpayer money would be spent on this project, largely, in my opinion, because of all the money that has been spent on the project. Are we still on track to reach that goal?
Yes, you've got MOUs that you'd executed with private property owners that were a commitment to provide $8.5 million of private funding that goes towards the additional cash required to complete this phase of the project.
And the financing that Mr. Bingham spoke about, are we going to go for financing for some reason?
No, sir.
Okay. And if we did, and the banks didn't finance it, and we needed the financing, the project could be killed?
Right, if it's not funded, yeah, then we cannot do the project.
Okay. But we wouldn't, the city would not need any financing if no more taxpayer money is to be spent on this project, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Mayor and council members, we did go out to RFP, as you stated, on November 21, 2016. We received nine proposals. We did go through the process, evaluated the proposals, and we had interviews that were held on May 13 with four of the top qualified firms. During the interview process, we had an emergency, one of the raiders had a medical emergency and was not able to attend all the interviews. We did put another staff member in there, there was a confusion that was caused by that, and that led to, led some of the companies, some of the firms to believe that there was on, there were less raiders than they were present at the meeting. We had originally scheduled five, as one from God's sake, we had four present, and then we did add another staff member that was not there in all of the, all of the interviews. The RFP process allows us to go ahead and redo the process, so we think that we need to do that, so council has the authority to cancel the process and redo the, reissue the RFP. We have enough time to do that, and I think it's fair to all the firms that were there, and they went through the effort to do the presentation, and so we'll open the process back up again. We will expedite it, the last one took longer because as we were going through the process, we were also doing other stuff, and the need for this process, or this contract, wasn't there. The need for this contract is around October and November of this year, is when we have to have the firm onboard. So I think we have enough time to go through the process, put the RFP out for a month, allow everybody else that proposed, including the people that were in the original nine, to propose again, and then reevaluate, and then reset up the interviews, and we'll come back to you within a couple of months to award the contract. And that concludes my presentation, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for staff? Okay, go ahead, Mr. Martin.
All right, so that was my main question, is the...
All right, so that was my main question, is it took about a six-month process to get here, so you're saying a couple of months you think you can expedite it?
That is correct. Previously, we had waited to make sure that the funding from the developers or the property owners were in place before we award any contracts of this large extent. And that funding should be in place, we are setting up the account soon, and we will be invoicing the property owners, and we should have the funding by the end of the month.
Okay, and you mentioned we have time, so I'm assuming you've looked at all the timelines?
That is correct.
Okay, and have you, so this doesn't happen again, have we changed our procedures, so in case someone does get sick, we don't have to do all this again?
Yeah, we will, hopefully nobody gets sick again on, but if it does happen, then we most likely should recancel, redo the interviews or reset of the interviews. That day, because of that, how it happened, and because we were more concerned about the person who got the emergency than actually worrying about the process, and I think that's where some of the, so I think that day, we probably should have redone the, reset up the date for another interview rather than going through with it, but it was decided to go through the interview, it did cause confusion, we admit that it's easier to go through the process again than to try to fix some of the confusion that caused, was caused by that event.
And to ensure that we're doing it fair, nothing was divulged, no, we didn't have any bids that were accepted, or no, I mean, this is all going over again, just from the beginning, scratched.
It is, the only information that was presented was at the last meeting, which was the amount of the, the order of the contract that was proposed for Falcon Engineering, but other than that, we haven't shared the rest of the documents with anybody else, so we will hold on to them until the process is complete.
All right, thank you. Any other comments, questions? All right, I entertain a motion for item number 11.
I'll make a motion to reject all proposals, on item number 11, to reject all proposals submitted in response to the request for proposals for construction management services for the Petrae Boulevard SR-60 Interchange Project Phase One, issued November 21st, 2016, and reissued, and reissuance of a new RFP for said construction management services.
I'll second.
I'll second that.
Mr. Martinez, go ahead.
I wasn't sure I heard you.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Laura?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Carroll?
Yes.
And Mayor White?
Yes. You guys want to take a break, or power through this? All right, let's take a quick 10-minute break, we'll be back at 7:25. Item 13, the first reading of an ordinance of the City of Beaumont, amending Title VIII, Chapter 8, dot 32 of the City of Beaumont Municipal Code pertaining to the feeding of feral cats. And I will open public comments at 7:27.
Mayor, would you, I think there may be a lot of community questions out there, the chief of police is ready to present some comments on this that may help address some of that.
Okay, sure. We'll suspend open comments and get a staff report first.
Evening, Mayor and Council, and so before you hit the last council meeting, we brought together a staff report to outline the incident at hand, which led to our current position of bringing forth a ordinance to address potential nuisances. I just want to, the staff report pretty much lays out what occurred, what I want to remind the public and the council about is the organizational philosophy of the Beaumont Police Department is community-oriented policing and problem-solving. And so as the chief of police, I have to bring forth potential solutions to community problems. And so recently, there was a case where some feral cats were being fed by one neighbor, and the unintended consequences were felt by the next-door neighbor. Eventually, she reached out to the police department for assistance, we discovered that we did not have an enforcement component to abate the problem if necessary. In this case, we didn't have to, but we did spend a considerable amount of staff time, and we're okay with that, we'll take the time necessary to educate and abate before we have to enforce on quality-of-life issues. Again, the good news is we resolved it. In my research of feral cats, the cat community of this nature, they don't survive by the generosity of the public, I mean, they belong in communities where they share their food, their prey, whatever they caught, they are able to self-sustain in that sense. But I do want to bring a few things to your attention, in the 10 years that I've worked here, you know, the issue with the feral cats has never accumulated to, to this one particular issue. Usually, it's education, it's working with the public, it's working with groups to, to take care of the cats, and a lot of times, we'll issue traps, and, but, and then that works, and then we'll relocate them with either a society or with Ramona that can adopt the cats out. But in this case, you had the property owner who objected to the trap being put on their property, and that's fine, they, they didn't want to see any animal trapped, and so, the only people that were trapped was the police department between this problem of these cats being fed, but the person affected not wanting to trap them. And so, again, people look to us like, hey, I'm calling you, please help, and that's what we're there for. So, but I do want to assure the council and the community, and I've talked to the staff about this, if, if this first reading is approved, and ultimately, if this ordinance is approved and adopted, we are not going to be proactive in the enforcement of this ordinance. We have that right to not be, it's the spirit of the law versus the letter of the law. Now, when it comes, this is a quality-of-life issue, it's not a criminal issue, we're not going to criminalize the feeding of animals of any type. My police officers are out there proactively looking for actual criminals, my animal control officers are very busy with their, with the City of Beaumont and their contract cities, but there's going to be a time when we will need to bill a right and administrative warrant to go onto the property to abate the problem, and I can't do that if it's not in the ordinance, so it has to be specific. So, I want to just give a scenario, I don't think you can really compare the two, but in a sense, you know, the city has many ordinances, and many of them aren't commonly enforced, such as basketball hoops. We see them in the streets, the cul-de-sacs, the kids play, you're not supposed to have one in the street, but my staff knows, hey, that's a community issue, if a neighbor calls, we'll go out and we'll address it, if it's a traffic hazard, a safety hazard, if kids in the street at dark, whatever. Again, if your neighbor parks his boat the day before the weekend before he goes, and it's been parked there too long, if you don't call because you're okay with it, we don't, we don't have the time to, to be that selective and enforce those issues, but if you call us, we certainly will, because our philosophy is no call too small. But I've even assured, you know, our local groups here tonight, that if we, if this is adopted, and we believe that we've hit a wall, we can't go any further besides enforcing, I will call that group. We will meet with that, with the, with this community group, I've spoken with her, I have her card, and then we will try every solution possible besides enforcement. But at the end of the day, it's certainly your council's decision, but if, but if it's not in the toolbox, then I can never use that. And so, and just finally, the option would be, of course, education, if need to be, abatement, there are administrative fines that could be attached, but again, in the 10 years I've been here, it's just never risen to that, but things change and situations change. And so I'd conclude with, with that.
Thank you, chief.
You're welcome.
We may have questions for you after the hearing. Okay. So now I will open the public hearing at 7:32.
Ellen Carr?
Good evening, good evening. My name is, I don't know if this is on or not, is it? Okay, my name is Ellen Carr, and I represent Tender Loving Critters Animal Rescue. Many, maybe you don't know, but we have been in the past area since the 1980s. We are probably the only rescue group around here. And I'm here tonight to tell you that we vehemently oppose this proposed ordinance. It is inhumane, cruel, and extreme. I heard what the chief said, we have spoken, and I understand what he said, but the thing of it is, if you approve this, it is on the books. So if he isn't here, and somebody else comes in, who's not maybe as understanding, and they decide to start enforcing this rule, it's not going to work. Starving animals, starving cats, is not going to control the cat population. There's always going to be feral cats, because there's always irresponsible citizens who dump their animals when they're tired of them. They don't take them to the shelter because their thing is, oh, they're going to get killed if they go to the shelter. And if they're feral, you know what? That's true. You don't take a feral cat to the shelter and expect it to be adopted. There's a very fine line with ferals. If you get them before a certain age, when they're kittens, there is hope. But for the most part, adult ferals do not tame. So what do you do with them? You kill them. The shelter can't keep them forever, because what are they going to do? Their cages are full all the time. It always seems to be kitten season. So this, what I would suggest is you table this. Get a group together, and I would be happy to be part of a group, let's discuss this rationally, sanely. There are methods to control the cat population. One is called TNR, Trap, Neuter, Release. It works, but it takes a community to do it. Do you want this to be the legacy of your kids? What does Beaumont do with the feral cats? We starve them so they die. That's not a solution. Be part of the solution. Get a group together, get a committee together, let's talk about this and see what we can do. The problem isn't just here in Beaumont, I live in Banning, and we have the same problem. I know this is going to sound daring, but can't we both get together, Banning and Beaumont? Let's solve this together. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carr.
Next speaker, Ann Connors.
I'd like to thank Mrs. Carr for my cat, who I adopted from her 12 years ago, and she's a wonderful cat. As you know, I was overwhelmed with cats, and they were doing a lot of, causing a lot of problems on my property for me and for my cat. I don't see that not allowing people to feed these cats when, when you find them doing it, is going to be starving the cats, because you're giving them 30 days in order to abate the problem, to either find homes or find rescues, find people that will do what they're talking about, they have 30 days in which to do that. And there's also an educational side of this with the police department, as the chief has made clear. But there comes a time when things are simply out of control, and you're simply overwhelmed, and your property is being destroyed. And as far as having a trap on your property, there was a time in the past when this person had 22 cats coming at me, and I weren't going to trap 22 cats. I can't even trap one cat now, because I am too old and infirm to do it. And so, we need some help here, where there are rules and regulations, and I was very pleased to hear the police chief telling us that he had made contact with these groups tonight in order to get their input and to try to come to reasonable solutions. But I still feel that you need something that will protect someone like me, or in the future, anyone else, when they become overwhelmed with this problem. Thank you.
I'm sorry if I say this wrong, Margaret Mayer?
Mayor White and Council, my name is Margaret Mayer, my residence is 11092 Maureen Drive, Cherry Valley, and I'd like to comment on this ordinance, because I also oppose it, but what I would like to propose instead is, as, as our lady from TLC has proposed already, is put a committee together to figure out how Beaumont and Banning can get together and create a spay and neuter and release program. I'm one of the crazy ladies who feeds cats. All of my pet cats in the house are feral, and I've tamed all of them, and they're wonderful pets, they all use the cat box, and they're not allowed outside because they don't quite understand that I'm not feeding the birds in the yard to fatten them up for the cats to eat. They don't quite get that part of, part of the thing. But I would be very, very happy to work on a committee to provide traps for people, and to figure out some way where we can do a low-cost spay and neuter program. I've literally spent thousands of dollars out of my own pocket getting these cats spayed and neutered, including some of the ferals that I'm currently feeding, so they'll stop having kittens. I don't have a problem with the cats, and of course, I can understand how cats can get out of control, feces in the yard, and the stink of urine, and so on, but that does, those problems can be abated as long as they're not multiplying and having two or three liters a year. So I think that that would be a reasonable approach, and I would like to participate in that kind of a, that kind of a work. Thank you.
Joan Oxendine?
Hi, Joan Oxendine, Beaumont, California. I also am opposed to this proposal. What I am suggesting is the same as two of the other advocates have suggested, that we go with the TNR program. It has been successful all over the United States for more than 20 years. Someone or a group of people volunteer to take responsibility for the cats at a particular location. The cats are trapped, they are sterilized, they are given their shots, and then they are fed on a regular basis. They also are provided with like shelters for cold or inclement weather. This works, the population is stable, there's no fighting, there's no disease, they are contained within their own little world, and it is outdoors, and it's probably on somebody's property, but it's done in agreement with that person. These kinds of programs have been very successful on military reservations, areas of employment, as well as residential areas. So I think that we can achieve the same success in Beaumont.
Debbie Marsh?
Hi, my name is Debbie Marsh, and I'm with TNR Riverside, and of course, I oppose your ban on feeding the cats for all the stated reasons, it's inhumane, it's cruel. Instead, I think you should look towards a TNR ordinance. That's what we do, is TNR, because these cats are being fed, so you define who the feeder is, you get together with them, you, we trap the cats, the cats are trapped, they're sterilized, they're returned, they're continued to be fed, there's no more babies, their population will dwindle slowly, an outside cat's lifetime expectancy is five years. An outside cat's lifetime expectancy is five years. So it's not like an indoor cat for 20 years. Within no time, your population is down to nothing. I personally did a mobile home park with, it took three years to do it, there were 700 cats there. And that was nine years ago, there's 50 cats there now. And we didn't have to kill no cats, and they didn't have to starve. That's what they wanted to do, is not be, you're not allowed to feed the cats. Instead, we did TNR, now there's 50 cats there, everybody was happy. The problem resolved itself after the TNR. I myself, I'm willing to help with this. You have, I don't know what you have in this area for low-cost spay and neuter, but a man by the name of David Kirk, with forever miasma, has offered free spay and neuter in Palm Springs. So it would just be a matter of getting them to Palm Springs. And like I say, I'd be willing to help you with the trapping, and to set it up, and organize it, and whatever needed to be done. Because to just ban the feeding, and I understand that it is a problem. When you have cats that more and more and more, it is, does become a problem quickly. But these cats, I use the term "community cats" because they're domesticated animals. They're not feral cats. They're domesticated. They are not socialized. That's the big difference. They cannot take care of themselves. They need somebody to feed them, provide them food and water. And that's being done, but a lot of times, what happens is, the feeder will have to feed late at night, so they don't get caught feeding, you know, that type of thing. And it doesn't have to be that way. If the cats are fixed, and they're not reproducing, the population goes down, there's no fighting, there's no diseases, and it's all good for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Luanne Hazel?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the name.
Luanne Hazel.
Okay.
Luanne Hazel, Beaumont. I've been a resident of Beaumont for 25 years, and I just wanted to speak as a resident that I'm strongly opposed to any ordinance that promotes the starving of domestic animals, or any animals for that matter. I'm, I'm in favor of TNR programs, and I would really urge you to consider that, and consider the suggestions of having a committee, because there are a lot of people willing to help alleviate the problem of feral cats.
Annette Winkler?
My name's Annette Winkler, and I'm with, I'm the president of TNR Riverside. What we do is TNR in the city of Riverside. We also place barn cats that are from the shelter, that are in immediate danger of euthanasia. It saves their life. Last year, 2016, we spayed and neutered 862 community cats. Out of all those cats, there was one cat that tested positive for FELV. None of the other cats tested positive for any disease. I have 25 cats, I've never received any diseases from my cats. This ordinance is putting out to the public that cats cause disease. It's fraudulent. I brought all the paper for you guys to read. There are scientific studies from alley cats allies, best friends. There's deterrence to keep the cats out of people's yards. They range from $20 to $50. They do work, and TNR Riverside would be more than willing to help with this particular situation. We've done it for the city of Riverside on problem neighborhoods. And we would just need somebody to be the go-between, so that we could get the parties together. And I encourage a TNR ordinance. It works, and it reduces the colony over a certain amount of time. Everybody's vaccinated. They have a little ear tip, and you can tell if a cat is fixed by the tip of their ear. And so it's a visual sight. I have 20 cats myself, and I oppose the feeding ban. In Antioch, California, they tried to do the feeding ban, and if you look online, it was futile. It didn't work. So again, I encourage a TNR policy. Thank you.
Marlene Pirtle?
Hello, my name is Marlene Pirtle, and I'm from Hemet, California. And I did write some stuff, so I'm going to go ahead with that. I did listen to your chief of police, and he seems like a reasonable person. I'm sure he's a caring person. But once his ordinance is on the books, it's going to be, it's going to be hard to work with it. So I really, I wanted to start by reminding us that we opened this meeting with a prayer. And the cornerstone of most religions is kindness and compassion and loving thy neighbor. And these community cats are our neighbors. So I just wanted us to keep that in mind. I also am a board member of TNR Riverside, which, you know, stands for Trap, Neuter, Return. We provide financial aid for people who are doing trapping. We loan traps out, and we educate people, because it's, it's what works. And many people have spoken, and will speak tonight, why this ordinance is a bad idea. But I'd like to speak to the, to the council about your role, because you eventually will be the ones deciding on whether this ordinance goes through or not. And I wanted to remind you that you are here to provide solutions for the good of your community and your citizens, which I know that you know. And that includes the animals who live here too, and the people who advocate for them. So what I, what I'm left with is questions for you regarding your due diligence. And so the questions I've come up with are, have any of you researched or educated yourselves about the issue of community cats and the problems associated with them? The myths and the truths? And have any of you researched the best practices and best solutions for effective feeding practices? This ordinance will put these cats in constant danger, and really through no fault of their own, mostly because of us, irresponsible citizens. And have any of you discovered, as Annette mentioned, that throwing a no-feeding ordinance at the problem does not work? You can research this online, and you will see cities with no-feeding ordinances, and you'll see that it really does not solve the problem. And also, I know none of you are willing to watch cats starve to death, and I know you don't want to be the ones to see that happen. And did you know that advocates for community cats all agree that spay and neuter, not starvation, is the way out of this mess? And I'm, I'm hoping that some of you tried to solve this nuisance problem with your citizen before initiating a new city ordinance. This ordinance will really do no, do more harm than good in solving the overall big picture. This is a problem whose time has come, and we need answers that actually do good. And have any of you reached out to groups, the way many have spoken tonight, to be able to help solve this citizen's problem, which is a problem, and we understand that? We really do not discount the nuisance issue and, and the fact that people do have problems. So writing an ordinance about this, you know, without having all the facts, you know, is really irresponsible. And government is designed to make our lives better, not worse. And starving cats and putting limitations on improving this situation will serve your citizens better. Don't citizens deserve better? Don't the animals of your city deserve better? You can't ignore the animal-living citizens of your community. And I truly believe that those who have legitimate nuisance problems with community cats can come together with those who advocate for community cats, and solutions can be implemented.
Ms. Pirtle, could you wrap this up, please?
Yes.
Sure.
Takes the will of everyone to do the right thing. So my suggestion is that you seek answers from experts and people who deal with this on a daily basis. So let's come together for a better solution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Keith Matthews?
I'm Keith Matthews. I'm a resident of the city of Corona. I'm here because I also oppose you putting an ordinance such as this on the books. I think it'll also reflect to other cities in the city of Riverside, and the county of Riverside, by you doing such. I'm a strong advocate of TNR. My wife and I got involved in this about three years ago. We TNR'd all the neighborhood cats. They would come by the house, they'd find food, we'd trap them. Next night, they'd be on the road, but they'd be taken care of by being either spayed or neutered. They'd be well taken care of with food, and they had their shots, and they were healthy, going back out to enjoy their lives. Now, we find that many of those cats don't survive much more than a couple of years, just because of the coyotes in the counties of Riverside and San Bernardino. So it's very, very difficult to say that it's a good program to starve them when they're having the hardest time just surviving. They don't do a good job of going out and finding feed for themselves, but if they're well cared for, they'll do a good job with mouse eating and rat hunting. So they actually are an advantage to the community if they're well taken care of. We also find that, my wife and I have been trapping for three years now, and we have averaged about 200 spay and neuters a year. And out of that, perhaps 10% of them have just been dumped cats. They're perfectly friendly. And as we found that we were taking them in, we tried to pet them, tried to see how they would react, got them socialized, and have gotten them adopted. This year has been a tremendously large kitten population. We have either trapped or picked up 27 kittens this year. Of that, we've already adopted out 20. So it's a program that can work if people are willing to be involved. But not feeding the cats doesn't involve anybody, except let's get rid of the problem. I'd like to read you a part of a code that is from California's code, see if I can find it now, and let you know that I think your idea of doing this is actually give me an opposition of your own state code. It's California Code 597, Cruelty to Animals. The status states that, the statutes state that anyone who maliciously or intentionally maims, mutilates, tortures, wounds a living animal, or maliciously and intentionally kills an animal, is guilty of an offense punishable by imprisonment in the state prison, or by fine of not more than $20,000, or both, fine and imprisonment. Just so you know then, that an ordinance to stop feeding the pets or the ferals would obviously be an ordinance that would cause harm to the animals. So you'd be in opposition of your own state code. Lastly, I'd like to say that Mahatma Gandhi has stated, "You will know a nation by how it treats its animals." Thank you.
Thank you.
Nikki Elko?
I'm Nikki Elko. I live in Banning. I was involved in cat rescue and feral cat caretaking for over 10 years. I do not know how to adjust this. Obviously, I oppose this ordinance. I think that penalizing feral cat feeders is not the answer, and that will not make the cats go away. Trap, neuter, return is the answer. And it will stabilize that colony and save the city money, because animal control will not be having to take up their time and energy trapping and killing, which is, I think, what they're calling "abatement." It's been proven time and time again, all over the country, the trap, neuter, return is efficient, cost-effective, and humane. Now, I understand that, because I've done this for a long time, and I still do it a little bit, mostly in advocacy and education, you do come up with people who ideologically are opposed to having animals spayed, neutered, caged, or trapped. And they're difficult people to work with, and I don't have specific answers for you on that. However, I do know that specifically targeting cats with the ordinance is not going to be the answer. I'm sure that legally, those issues are covered, and under the law enforcement rules for neighbor disputes, and the sanitation issues are covered under an umbrella in code enforcement. Addressing the sanitation issues and the health issues, I just want to say that the main arguments against feral cats, and cats that can be adopted, are not by definition feral. Ferals are unadoptable, because they're un-socialized, and they cannot be tamed. Okay, rabies is usually the first. And I looked up the California Department of Public Health, and in the past seven years, which is what's available online, there have been at most two cases of rabies reported in cats in the entire state of California, and the closest one was in Kern County. Skunks and raccoons are much more effective vectors of rabies. They also carry leptospirosis, which is usually fatal in dogs. I lost a dog to lepto last year. Cats also kill mice, and mice are known carriers of the hantavirus. Now, I found an article from last year in the Press Enterprise that said that 10 rodents were found in San Timoteo Canyon that were positive for hantavirus. So the cats do do a service to the community. The third argument that people usually make against cats is that they carry toxoplasmosis. You're more likely to contract toxoplasmosis from undercooked meat than you are from cat feces, especially if hygienic levels are maintained, washing of hands and things like that. So in conclusion, I just want to say that I think that creating an ordinance to target feral cats and their feeders is misguided, and that probably education and advocacy are the way to go with this. You've got groups that want to work with you. I have a trap, I'm willing to donate to any group that needs it. I have a spare. I'm really not using it that much anymore. But when I moved out here, the first thing I did in my neighborhood was meet the people who were feeding the cats, and assist them in getting them spayed and neutered. And so we have a pretty stable cat population in our neighborhood now. That's all I need to say, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Michelle Mastro?
I live in Palm Springs, California. I have been a feeder and a TNR person since 2000, in this city, when I moved to Palm Springs. I agree with everything, and I don't believe I need to tell you any statistics. I just want to speak to you from my heart. There is a group called the Cat Action Team that formed, oh, maybe five or six years ago. And they have built themselves up to, they have so many volunteers now, and they work with the Palm Springs Animal Shelter to do low-cost TNR. And they have many volunteers that go out throughout the city, and they have a hotline for people to call for help. Before Palm Springs had such a group, and citizens are really willing to help when they get the information, they are. I would go to any length by myself, as a woman, to feed cats that angry people, there are angry people, and there are happy people. I have been accosted, I don't know how many times over the years. Since the Cat Action Team has come into place, through advocates, like all the people that I've just spoken to, and especially Ellen Carr, I'm, I'm also do cat rescue with Ellen Carr and Adopt Out Cats and Kittens. When I am approached by someone that's aggressive or assertive to me, I give them the card. Here's the card to the Cat Action Team. I am working and volunteering with the city of Palm Springs and the City Animal Shelter. Would you please call them? I am their volunteer. I can't answer any of your questions. I have not, I am no longer in fear. I went out every single hour of the day in mourning before this group came into effect in Palm Springs, because I'm, myself, and I know there are others, are going to feed the cats no matter what, even if, even if they chance going to jail. There's just, it's just... There's just, it's just the humane thing to do. And I'll tell you what frightens me, and I'm just speaking from my heart, is if this ordinance were to pass, of course, I'm opposed, what happens to people, good citizens, tax-paying citizens, that are going to go out and feed these animals anyway, and here comes someone that says, "Aha, it's illegal. I can citizen arrest you," and who knows what they might do to, if they feel like they have a right to do that. And I just wanted to talk about that because I think it's important, just as important as all the statistics that everyone has educated you about. And the person that was mentioned, David Kirk, he is a great big part of advocate for the Cat Action Team in Palm Springs, and they've had a great success. The first year, the first year that Tanya Petrovna started her Cat Action Team with very few volunteers, only herself, me, and a small handful, 600 cats were spayed and neutered in Palm Springs. We don't call them feral cats anymore. We call them community cats. Many times-
Ms. Maestro, could you wrap this up, please?
Yes. Many times, the cats that are out there are domesticated cats that people have put out there, not spayed or neutered, and then they have the babies, and they become un-socialized. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Maxine Lewis?
I'm Maxine Lewis, and I live in Banning. And you've heard a lot, and I won't go over any of that. Man, your chief of police sounds like an awesome guy. He really does. And I appreciate that he's asking you for a tool, for the toolbox. If you carry that out, that can be a pretty scary thing. We could put a lot of tools in that toolbox, and the tool that we're talking about tonight is making it illegal to feed a cat. It just doesn't make any sense. You're not going to be able to enforce it. I don't think it's going to work, and I think it's a scary way to go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, I can't read the first name. Last name is Smith?
Don. Is it Don? Okay. Mayor White, members of the council, my name's Don Smith. I'm a property manager. I represent about 50 of your properties in town, in which occasionally, we have animal control issues that is the property manager I have to deal with. So, I'd like to start by saying, I've been in a position where somebody has completely created an out-of-control colony that somebody needs to come and deal with. So, I appreciate your chief saying, "I came up with this problem. I didn't really have a solution. So, why don't I give myself a solution so that I can actually take action when a problem like this comes up to resolve it?" I think that's a great idea. I don't think it's a good idea that we make the condition precedent for him to be able to take the action that somebody has fed a cat. I think we need to come up with a different condition precedent of outlining if this certain problem exists, then this ordinance kicks in that allows the whoever, code enforcement, animal control, the chief of police, to then start setting traps to solve this problem. So, I think from a PR standpoint, having an ordinance that says it's illegal to feed a cat, I guess I want to say this really nicely, but it makes you look really silly. You need an ordinance, though, that gives the chief that tool, but it needs to be then enforced reasonably. I mean, certainly, if you create a city ordinance, then it would be a, the city attorney's job to do a warrant, and then if you had to go to court, city attorney has to charge you to go to court. It's probably not the best use of your money when there's ways that you can do TNR that would actually solve the problem better. So, I applaud proactive thinking. I applaud that somebody says, "Here's a problem. We need a solution." I just don't think this is the one. I think you need a solution that says, "If there's a problem," and then you define that problem, and the problem isn't somebody's fed a cat. You then define that problem that then gives you the tools you need to put TNR, or whatever's appropriate, into effect to then remedy that problem. So, I would suggest that you do come up with a solution. I'd suggest you think it better out than, "We're going to starve cats." Just my comments.
All right. We'll go ahead and close public comments at 8:10. Counsel, Ms. Carroll?
Thank you all. Thank you for taking the time to come tonight, and thank you for taking the time to care. I really do appreciate it. There are a number of things that were said, some good ideas, lots of concern. I'm sure we'll get to dissect all the details of it, but there's one thing I wanted to address. One of the people who came up brought up, I don't know if you've done any research into this. Oh, yeah. I've done a lot of research into it, and I've done a lot of miles with taking care of animals myself. I have a son-in-law who trapped seven feral cats because there was a cat problem right next door to his house, and he funded partially the spading of all of those animals, brought them all back, released them, and over a period of time, probably about five or six years, he's down now to a couple of cats that are in the neighborhood. So, I do understand that aspect of it. I also understand the aspect of really caring about it. There was a time when I worked a full-time job, had two kids in high school, and I took in three pregnant cats because I lived on a country road, and everybody thought cats could just fend for themselves if you dumped them by the wayside. So, when those three cats, in addition to the cats I already had, had their litters, I actually was bringing kittens to work and giving them to people who came into my office for meetings. So, I understand the issue with that, too. I also have researched the TNR program, so I do have an understanding of that. I don't have all the answers, as does no one in this room, and I'm very sympathetic with our wonderful police chief, who said that he feels like he's the one trapped because he's trying to do the right thing. And nothing gets done without organization, and one of the things that this horrible, terrible proposal for this ordinance, where we want to starve all the animals in the universe, did is it brought you all together and it put the issue on the table. And I really very much appreciate that, and I'm going to turn it over to other people because I don't want to turn this into me sort of, oh, and by the way, I started giving to best friends 20 years ago. So, I get it. I get the whole purpose. But we have to come up with a solution because you brought up a good point. You said, "What happens if we get a different police chief, and he wants to go out and arrest all the cat feeders in the world?" And, yeah, that's true. What happens if everybody decides that they don't like a TNR program, and they don't want to trap any cat? And we're basically breeding cats so that they can actually be fed to coyotes? So, we have to come up with a solution that is something that we can live with and something that respects every concern and respects the life of all animals. So, I don't have the answers, but I know we're going to hammer something out tonight. So, I'm done, and I appreciate very much you being here tonight.
Anybody else? All right, I'll jump in. Have I done the research on this item, as one speaker asked me? No, I have not. I have personal experiences with unwanted cats around my yard. I will not feed them because I don't want them around my yard. Does this ordinance make it illegal to feed cats? No, it doesn't. It talks about regulating the feeding of feral cats. Do we need a tool? Do we need an ordinance so that we can address issues that were brought to us and give the police chief some tools, regardless of who the police chief is? Yes, we do. Is this the right ordinance? I'm not so sure it is, but we do need an ordinance of some sort. I don't, this is a Beaumont problem. We're not going to address Banning's problem. That's not, that's not what we're, you know, we've got enough of our own problems to deal with to just address Beaumont's problems. I would be in favor of tabling this ordinance for some time for us to do some more research, but I want you to understand that I think we need to have, we need to worry about some controls, some issues, and I'll bring them up here. My email address is on the website. It's lwhite@ci.beaumont.ca.gov? Am I close, or US? Anyways, it's on the website. Send me whatever you want. Send me links to articles. Send me your information, but let me tell you what I'm looking for. First of all, and forgive my ignorance, but does TNR apply to dogs? Why is this only cats? Don't answer it now. Just send me your, these are the questions I'm going to ask you, so just send me those answers. What if there is a case, you know, I shouldn't be required to feed feral cats if I don't want to. I know. These are just questions I want you to answer for me, okay? So that I have a better judgment, and that's assuming that we do table it. This is just my suggestion. There's four of us up here. So, what if we don't have enough property owners willing to host the spayed and neutered feral or community cats? What do we do in the case where someone next door to somebody who does not want cats in their yard or affecting, I have a dog. I don't, I don't want my cat, my dog having to deal with a cat that gets in the backyard because it won't end nicely, unfortunately. My dog just doesn't like cats. Can, you know, could we, in an ordinance, I'd like to see some other cities that have ordinances that are close by. I'm not, I'm not taking my notes now. Okay? You guys, you guys seem very motivated, so I think you would be motivated enough to shoot me an email, okay? I would like, you know, as I'm thinking through this, here's my thought, is we go, we'll use your case. You go to the neighbor, the neighbor's not willing to stop feeding the cats. The neighbor, what if the neighbor is not willing to go with TNR? Then how, you know, how do we address that? I think that, you know, in a case like this, if there's a complaint, and as the chief said, he's received very few complaints over 10 years on this issue, so I don't know that it's a huge problem that requires a big tool. But what if we offer the person feeding the feral cats the opportunity to pay for the TNR? And then if they choose not to do that, then another piece of the ordinance goes into place, giving them that opportunity. Maybe the next piece could be, we reach out to organizations like yours and say, "Look, we've got these cats here. The neighborhood's got a problem with them. No one's willing to step up and pay the cost. You know, are there organizations like yours?" And I'm just, I'm just brainstorming here. I think a cost should be part of the ordinance. I think if the neighbor does not agree to help us come to a resolution that everyone can live with, that there should be a fine or at least an administrative fee for that person to pay for, whether it's the TNR or whatever the next choice is. And I think that's all the notes that I have. Now, I do know that right now, we do have, you know, another thing that we already have in our ordinances, animal rescue facilities. And this ordinance here talks about if somebody wants to feed feral cats, community cats, I apologize for using the wrong PC lingo, then they could apply for a rescue license. And at that point, it brings to our attention that there might be a problem here, and we can start working proactively with that person to say, "Okay, here's what it means when you get a rescue license." We do have to have some limits on the number of animals that people can keep in the city, I think. And just by saying that, "I'm not keeping them because they don't, they don't live in my house or my yard. They're out there, but I'm feeding them. I'm encouraging them, and if I'm not willing to take some of the responsibilities that you folks are talking about, then there has to be some kind of mechanism for the city to address it, and there has to be a way that the person who refuses to stop the problem pays for the problem." So, those are the things that I would like to see, and I'm willing to readdress this now before I move on and let someone else speak. First reading means that we can, we don't really need to scrap this. We can come back with amendment suggestions and ideas before the second reading.
That's correct.
Okay. So, I personally would like to table the first reading. Give me a couple of council meetings, not the next one, to be able to look into and review the information. That's my position. Mr. Martinez?
Just a couple of comments, and I agree. I think that's the direction we need to go. Just, I applaud you for coming in and speaking for what you believe truthfully, so thank you for that. I just want to remind how this situation came about. Basically, the focus and birth of the ordinance was not to not feed cats and deprive them. It was a dispute that happened when one of our residents' quality of life was severely compromised. All was tried between the residents to solve the issue. Screens were being sprayed, the grass was being torn up, birds were being killed. It was a quality of life issue for the resident involved, and it was just something that they felt shouldn't be. So, that's kind of where the birth of the ordinance came from, is how do you, you know, how do you address this when you have a dispute between residents? You know, and what happens when you have a resident that's not cooperative? What happens when, I mean, we're all intelligent people. We, you know, we love animals. We look to do the right thing, but what happens when a resident is not cooperative? We, the city, don't have a right to go on their property. Animal groups don't have a right to go on their property, so how do you dispute that? I mean, how do you fix that? So, you know, I agree with the mayor. We do need an ordinance. We do need something that gives some sort of rules, an outline of what to do. Is this the ordinance? Probably not. I have been convinced today about the use of the TNR, I believe, and much more needs to go into the ordinance, and I applaud the mayor's questions. I agree that many of those questions need to look into, and now that we have such a great support, we can get some of those answers with your cooperation and input. So, I'm with you for tabling this and looking more into it, maybe reword it so that it doesn't sound like if you're feeding a cat, you can, you know, get in trouble because then you have a whole nother issue. But there needs to be some parameters, so I'm sure we're going to get there, and I'm looking forward to seeing what options are out there because I was, I didn't realize that there were so many ways we can go with this, you know? So, I have been enlightened, so thank you, and I look forward to seeing how we can resolve this.
Jay Martinez at CI Beaumont, something like that.
Just in closing, Marley, thank you for challenging me. I took that personally, so I will, I will do my homework, and I will learn, and I'll be better educated on how to address this issue. I agree, I think it needs to be tabled, and I do have a number of questions that I'll be looking up, find answers to, but I appreciate all of you coming out and taking the time to help educate us as well and help us look for options to the problems. With that, I can make a motion to table this?
One more. Has your problem been resolved?
Yes. He agreed to stop feeding the cats, and they all left. They look like they belong to someone when they show up, well-fed and with good condition. I think they belong to people, streets over and so forth, but he was bringing them through them. And they left, they belonged right away. So, he stopped feeding them.
Thank you.
Can I just add one?
Go ahead, Ms. Carroll.
I hope that those of you who expressed your concern tonight, when you filled out your speaker slip, that you put information on- your speaker slip, that you put information on how to contact you on that slip, because if there's any questions that we may have of you because you're in programs for TNR or you have expertise, then if we need to reach back, that would be helpful, so.
Can I add one comment? Let me give one more email address, and so if everybody here that was here would email their contact info, we can reach out. It's my email address.
Okay.
Which is T as in Tom, Parton as in Dolly, at ci.beaumont.ca. Yeah, see, I read my card.
Okay.
So.
And I'm N. Carroll, with the same N. of, with two Rs and two Ls, if you need to contact me.
All your emails are on?
They're on our website, yeah.
We keep our cards with our email.
Okay, okay. To be honest with you, I really am busy, so don't expect me to, to reach out to you. I'm expecting you to, to come to us with some ideas.
We're busy too.
I know, I know. I know, I understand. Mr. Laura, did you want to make a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion to go ahead and, and table the reading of ordinance of the City of Beaumont, titled Chapter Eight, eight point three-two of the City of Beaumont Municipal Code pertaining to the feeding of feral, AKA, community cats.
May I, may I add to that, table it for the first meeting in September?
Yes, that's acceptable to me.
Yes.
It's to be September the fifth.
Okay. Okay. I'll second that.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Laura?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Carroll?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes. You all don't have to leave, we have more ordinances to go.
Did you hear that y'all? Did you hear that y'all?
Did I say y'all?
Yeah, you sure did.
You did. It was you all. To Hardin Harper Incorporated of Santa Ana, California, in an amount not to exceed $969,000.
Honorable Mayor, councilmember, this is, as you, as you mentioned, award a contract to Hardin Harper for $969,000. It's for two segments, two street segments in the city. One is Zinnia Avenue from Sixth to Eighth. That street is in very poor condition. We're expecting to remove and replace the whole street. We are widening street slightly to the, to the east and adding a berm. The other segment is Oak Valley from Cherry to Beaumont Avenue, and then there's some work done at the I-10 and Oak Valley, just by the off ramps and on ramps. We put this out to bid, we received five bids, and Hardin Harper was the lowest bidder on this project. We're recommending that you award the contract to Hardin Harper with any changes to the contract as suggested by the city, returning any minor modifications to the language of the contract. In addition, we're, we're requesting that contingency budget be set up for this project for 25% of the total amount. And the reason for 25% on this, actually, there's two reasons. The first one is that we are doing a street in the older part of town, and we believe some of the areas have, do have clay. So as we open up the street, we want to make sure that we take care of the sub base properly. That's not included as part of the contract. If there's any work that needs to be done to fix the sub base, that would have to be an added cost. The reason we didn't do the geotechnical, because it would have been closer to $25,000, $30,000 to the geotechnical work than, and then to come up with a recommendation for certain areas. I think it'd be easier for us to go there and make sure, and when we have it opened up and do the testing, as we're doing for the street, and if we find anything, area that's failing, just to fix that area rather than having to test the whole street and figure out where we're going. So it is a first street we're doing in the downtown area. What we see from there, we will be able to use as we do the streets within the downtown. The other thing is, we're working in, on, a portion of the work on Oak Valley has to do with the work on off ramps and on ramps. We are processing a permit with the Caltrans, and for, because it will require closure of the off ramps and on ramps. Sometimes they do require that we do work in more than one setting, we may have to come back in two or three settings to finish the work off, we may not be able to close the lanes as we propose. The, the contract as proposed expects ramp closure and then us being able to do all at one time in the daytime. Sometimes they require us to work at night. That means we would have to go out there, do the grinding, come back and set up at night. If we do go at night, there's substantial cost in setting up, lighting, traffic control, that's not part of this contract. So we are requesting a budget for contingency we set up higher than normal on this. Normally it's 10%, this one is 25%. So that's the reason for a higher contingency on this, and we're also, we're also requesting the authority to manage to approve the budget, the change orders, but not exceed the contingency budget for this project. That's my presentation, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any public comments on this item?
Yes.
Okay, we'll probably call you back up. Open public comments at eight twenty-nine.
Thank you. I have no concerns with what the city engineer just said. You're going to run into unforeseen conditions, there's a subgrade and everything like that, and that, that 25% contingency is needed. The problem I got is the same thing here that you just had in the contract, you just completed on Eighth Street. You're paying for removal and relocation of fences that are in the city right of way. These fences were put up illegally. They didn't have encroachment permits or anything, they just put them up. We did Beaumont Avenue, we did First Street, the city. We put the sidewalks in there, their fence was in the way, we just took it out. If they wanted it removed, they were given notice to remove their fence and relocate it themselves, it was going to be torn out. On First Street, there was a swimming pool, an in-ground pool was in the city right of way. We didn't buy that guy a new pool. I think you're setting a bad precedent here. You did that on the previous contract. You paid for, for more fence relocations for people that had fences illegally in the right of way. Even if it was a part of the town, it used to be in the county, I doubt if they got encroachment permits from the county when they put those fences, they just put them up. It's, Eighth Street's got 18-foot right of ways in most places. I know on Veely, it's, there's a couple fences out there, they need to relocate them. And another thing that you did on Eighth Street, I hope you're not going to do it here, you put the curb and gutter into the sidewalks, and they extended the driveways for people. That's their responsibility. You use community block grant funds on this last, I don't know if this one has CDG funds, but that's federal money, there's specific requirements. It becomes a gift of public funds, putting in those, extending those driveways and things. I think you need to watch that. I have no problem with what you want to use the contingency for, but it's unknown. I got a feeling that, that street on the Zinnia is going to be a lot of work because of the subgrade. It was placed on native. But the thing of it is, is there needs to be some more controls in here. We shouldn't be giving away the public's money to, to the property owners. They need to be responsible. They made the mistake putting their fence out there, they need to relocate it themselves. They didn't get the proper permits, that's their responsibility. But I'm, I'm in favor of the project, but I think you need to watch the controls that you have in there, because you have plans and specs here, and on there, I know you got a lot of overruns on curb and gutter and sidewalks and everything else, and I don't understand why you have plans and specs. It should be pretty straightforward, it shouldn't be all this added place. I think most of that concrete came in from, on Eighth Streets with all the curb and gutter and extra things that was put in, the extra driveways and things, and that's not what the government's money's for. So I, I wish you guys would take a look at it, get a better control on it, and don't set a precedent here, because everybody in the city's going to ask for that, and I don't, you know, I don't think that's something that needs to be done. So I wish you would take a look at that, and I appreciate the fact that you have, but please take a look at that, because I think it's a concern that's really valid.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I'm the speaker.
All right, we'll close the public comments at eight thirty-one. I'm here. I didn't see in here where this addresses the issue that Mr. Burke brought up as far as replacing fencing in, that people have put into the city right of way. Can you address that?
Yes, sure, I can. The, if, if we do find a fence, we're doing a project, and we find a fence that is in the city right of way, the, the process for that, if it's an illegal fence, is to go through court enforcement's process. We have to go there, give them a notice, remove the fence, relocate, we have to give them the opportunity to relocate the fence. We actually have to go through first and figure out if there was a permit issue or not. So as we're doing this project, and you can imagine all the fences that are there, and all the stuff that's put in, people have put in sprinklers there as well, they have put grass there as well, so, so, so our policy, which is, you know, which I've been using for a long time in other cities as well, is that we replace with as kind. If somebody has lawn, they will replace it with lawn. If somebody has sprinklers, they will replace it with sprinklers. So we only do as much as the person has done. If they have a fence that is in our right of way, we just move it over to wherever the property line is or wherever that fence is, and that way, we are actually complying, the federal, we're not, we're not giving away public funds, because all the work that we're doing is in public right of way, and it is improving the public right of way itself. The fence that's there is just being relocated, there is no new fence being given to them. And as far as the driveway is concerned, those driveways belong to the city. We maintain them, we put them in there. If somebody comes, if somebody has a need for a wider driveway, and we're doing this project, then it's done in the project side. If somebody comes in and actually wants a driveway, which is the, which is not the approach itself, but they want work done beyond the property, we, we ask them to pay their share, and they normally either pay the contractor or they pay the city for additional work that's done on their property. If we have to cut a driveway because of the grade, and we did some of these over here where the grade was very steep, then we get a permission from the property owner, and we put the driveway back at a level that is drivable into the property. So there's a lot of things at play, which we make sure that there is no gift of public fund. Gift of public fund would be if we went in and started putting yards, when there were no yards there, or we, if we relocate, for example, if there is a retaining wall, and we have to, somebody put a retaining wall there, or we did move a couple of retaining walls, or if somebody had a slope that wasn't being managed properly, because we had to go out there and do work on their property, we sometimes put retaining walls for people. So it's all, it all depends on what is being done. It's a determination that we make, and we're very careful in not giving away any work that would consider a gift of public fund. On Zinnia, there is some fences, there is some carbon, carbon gutter that's going to go in, so if we have to relocate, we relocate. If there's some missing driveways there, it's, if, 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 if the property owner has a garage, and they don't have a driveway, then we put in a drive approach at that spot. We put the driveway up until the back of the city property, and that's where we stop. It's their responsibility to go from there all the way to their garage. And, but, if we put a drive approach, then we may end up grading some of their property just to provide them access, because otherwise, they will not, there may be a great differential between what we put in and where their, where the dirt driveway lies. So it, that's not a gift of public fund. We're still taking, making sure that the property owner now has an access, which he already has, we haven't created another access. We're just making sure his access is proper, he can go from a driveway, drive approach back to his garage. So I think that's, that's, that's how I approach the project, that's how we build the projects, and we do replace, if somebody has put in sod, then we replace sod with that. If somebody had flowers there in the public right of way, then we do relocate those flowers and put them on behind curb and gutter and sidewalk, and I think that's appropriate and that's reasonable, and as being, as being neighbors to them, we are the one that have the road, and they are the people that are living there. I think it's, it's appropriate for us to make sure that whatever we've done has not impacted the residents that are there, so. That's actually, I mean, I would like to answer the question.
Okay. Mr. Laura.
So on fences that are within the right of way, typically those don't require building permit, if it's a chain link or something like that, we replace that or we relocate that if the owner, when given the opportunity to do so, does not do that?
That is correct. In fact, that's under federal guidelines, we're supposed to do that. So if, if we do find fences and stuff, we relocate. Imagine if somebody has a dog, and we take the fence down, now we tell them, "There is no fence now." So people have, you know, have animals that they use, they, so it's, it's very, it's very reasonable, every city does it. If there's a fence already there, and that's in the right of way, we're assuming that they either got a permit or it's grandfathered in. We, that's not the, the, in the context of doing the project, we're not going out there and relocating all of that stuff. Mailbox is another example. We, we relocate the mailboxes. If somebody has a mailbox, it's not city's responsibility to give them mailboxes, but if a mailbox is already there as part of the project, we set them in the right place so the mailman can deliver the mail. So all of those things that are in public right of way, we accept them as, as grandfathered in, that's, that's there, and then we make them relocated. If something that, you know, if they've got a basketball hoop, then that's not the place for it. We'll take it down, we're not going to put the basketball hoop back. It doesn't belong in the right of way. So that's something that we will not, we will not put back something that is not part of the right of way itself.
Technically, actually, really, nothing belongs in the right of way, because it's really not, it's the city's property, not?
The, the right of way between curb and the property line is actually shared by both. They maintain, most people maintain their right of way, they actually water it, they put grass there, they put trees there, put landscaping there, some people, when we don't have sidewalk there, they put in gravel there, so they do maintain that portion of it. In fact, their insurance covers all the way up to the curb, the homeowner's insurance recognizes that covers all the way up to the, up to the curb. So it is, in a sense, it's a shared area between the property owners and the city.
And, and just, I guess my, I've got a couple other, on driveway approach, where you actually, you do the curb cut, and then, for example, if you, if you build a home on a vacant lot, that contractor, that owner is responsible to put in the concrete driveway and the approach. City doesn't cover that cost.
That is correct.
But in this case, if we were to do the improvements for the sidewalk, the city would cover the cost of the driveway, even though the, the approach is existing, obviously, we're not creating a new approach, but we'd be paying to cover the driveway approach?
If, not on a vacant lot. So if, if, if there's a resident on there, if they, if, even if they do not have a garage and they have a driveway, that's just a dirt driveway, we will give them an approach and we will give them concrete up to the back of city property. So the, the concrete will only go up to the end of where the city right of way is, or where, normally it's the sidewalk, it's end of the sidewalk, it's 10 feet, it's five feet of the driveway and then five feet of the sidewalk, and that's where we end it. If somebody has no, if somebody has no, there is no property on there, then we do, there's nothing built on the property. We don't give them any driveways. But then the homeowner, when they built the house, they will put the driveway in, but if the, if the, if there is no garage, the assumption is still that they need to park the car on their property, and that's, not having a garage doesn't mean they cannot park the car.
Could, and you provide that government code offline for me? Just email it to me or?
For?
It says that where, that the city or the jurisdiction is required to cover the cost of relocating.
Yeah, I can, I can, I can, I'll, I'll look at the federal guidelines on relocation and I'll.
And then the, the only other comment I had was on the, the change order authorization. I understand that you've got to keep the, the construction moving, and change orders can sometimes, if you've got to wait for approval, stop projects and you lose subcontractors and it takes a while to get them back. I would just like to make sure that, that council is, is updated, so council's aware of change orders and the cost of change orders, so that, that we're aware, and if there is a, a problem, at least we'll be made aware of it, and maybe can, we can question it at that time. That's the only other comment I have on that item.
On change orders, if the change order exceeds the limit of the city manager, then has to be brought to the city council prior to us approving the work. If, we do have an update every month that we do, so I can bring update on the project and let you know what the change order was and how much was it issued. The other thing we will, we always do is at the end of the project, when we close the project out and we find the notice of completion, we bring all the change orders and all the quantities that were approved for your final approval. So you do get to prove it at the end, once, once you approve the final project, all the change orders, even though they were issued by city manager, you will get to see them at the end of the project.
Just, if we could see, also see them during construction, that way we're not surprised at the end of the project, or somebody doesn't hear about it before we do, and we, we're surprised at a, at a meeting, is all I'm looking at. Thank you. That's all I have.
One thing, you know, on drive approaches, it is very common to replace the drive approaches when you're doing a street reconstruction project. So where an existing driveway is there, you know, where you're reconstructing or you're widening a roadway especially, somebody's got an entitlement, they've got an approach that, that's already there that provides access to their property.
Right.
And what I'm referring to is, you can't go back later and just build a curb now and restrict that access anymore.
Right.
So it's responsibility of the agency of the city in this case, as we're reconstructing, coming through, to make sure that that access and that entitlement is still maintained for that property that's there. Now, if we go beyond that right of way or go beyond the scope of that work, then, yeah, that, that, it's going to be a problem. We don't need to be doing that, so. So, you know, that, that's really a kind of a critical issue, and I think philosophically is, you know, people have property, they've enjoyed that property for a period of time, maybe years, maybe longer, and the city's coming through to do a project, then we need to take care of those property owners that are along the way and make sure that this improvement we're doing is functional and allows them to continue to, the use and enjoyment of that property as they were equal or better than before we came through with that project.
And my, my example wasn't clear, and I apologize. So if somebody has a dirt drive or an asphalt drive, we don't replace like for like, we would improve that to, to concrete.
We'd probably do concrete apron, you know, a concrete approach coming off. And part of that, too, is a maintenance issue, you know, because we're doing a new street, we're doing curb, we're doing some improvements that's there. If all of a sudden, we have dirt driveways in the middle, and they're cut, or the returns aren't appropriate, or whatever's happening out there, then, you know, we have another issue with maintenance, with the, you know, safety potentially of that property, you know, and as well as for the street infrastructure that we're working on. So, you know, there, there's some viable reasons that we need to make sure that the appropriate curb cuts and appropriate access points are maintained within those projects that we're getting.
Okay. Thank you.
Last one, one point of clarification.
Let's finish the council, and then I'll, I'll let you ask. Anyone else with questions, comments?
Just...
Go ahead.
My only concern was the 25% change order. And I understand it's a big project, and it is a mess, so I understand that. But, you know, I was concerned at first, that's like $242,000, you know, that's a big amount. But I'm willing to, as long as, I agree with Councilmember Laura, as long as we're getting a little kind of a, what's going on, it just kind of, so there's no surprises at the end. I mean...
Well, one of the things that, and Councilmember Laura and I talked about this this afternoon, but one of the things that we would propose to do staff-wise, and Omar, I haven't talked to him about this yet, so it'll be a surprise for him. But, you know, one of the things that we create in this budget is a, you know, project or administrator. And so we have a staff person there that's going to be there to oversee and help administer our contracts, and look at what our cash flow conditions are on the property, what POs and processing draws and those types of things. We also have a process in the finance operation where they're looking at the cash side of that project. So those numbers are a little bit different, because the timing and how things come together are different from project administration to cash reporting. So, but with that, is to create on these major projects a monthly report that we can provide back to council. So here's the status of that project. Some cases, there may, there may not be a change, there may be no draws, you know, within a, that reporting period. But that way, we can kind of help keep a tracking for you of where those major projects are. And so I proposed that on major capital projects, so buildings, these major roadway projects. Now, if it's pothole patching, you know, probably not something like that, but if we're doing major capital work, you know, to be able to provide that back, so, so y'all can keep track, and you're not caught off, or caught unaware, as we may have a devolving situation.
Especially where change orders are involved.
Correct.
That's all.
Any questions?
No, but the change order, the numbers are so close between the bids, that the change order, and that amount, if you add it to the low bid, puts it above the next one. So, you know, it's nice when you feel pretty confident that the change orders are only going to be for things that really come up and really need change, and, you know, not a way for somebody to...
Okay.
Edge it.
The bids come in, in this case, these are quantity bids, so there's so much quantity of material that's needed, and there's a unit price for that quantity that rolls up into what the cost for that may be. And so, you know, what happens if concrete comes in high? What happens if pipe comes in low? I mean, there, there's different offsets and things. The contingency isn't say, oh, we got a whole nother 25% to spend. You know, the issue is that legally, you have the opportunity, there's a cap on how much you can move with, in regard to the contract price that you have, and that's to be fair and equitable to the other bidders that are out there. So, you know, there is a fair, there's a consistency process that needs to go into there, but there may need to be some room there. But, you know, we're not going to the contractor saying, we got 969 plus 25%. We want them to know, you got 969, and that's what we're going to spend. If there's a change order increase because we've asked for an increase in something, maybe there's some additional things we overlook, okay, that may be a little bit of a scope change. But by and large, it's going to be, did we hit something unexpected out there? Was there an unmarked utility that nobody knew about that was there? You know, is there going to be some kind of issue that we need to address? But, you know, but typically, the process we would have is, okay, there may be a change order that came forward that required an increase here, where can we offset that? How do we, how do we keep that project over on budget? So that's the approach that we're going to take with it. We're not looking at it as this plus that's there. And even if you go with the second or third, more expensive bid, you know, there's still the potential of change order on that one, so that could even be dominoing as well. But we're not, we want to pride ourselves in coming to you saying, we brought this project in on time, or maybe early, and at or below budget. That's what our objectives is.
No, as long as we manage it really closely, and everybody gets the message, then I understand the concept that it's fluid, and sometimes you just don't know. But I think the message is really strong.
Mr. Berg, if you'd like to come up and make a comment, I just want to ask a favor of you, if three or four years from now, you're up here as mayor, and I'm over there, that you'll be a little flexible with my time as well?
Okay, I'm, I'm, I just, I think there's a misconception of what I was trying to say, and Councilmember Laura understood. I'm not complaining about curb and gutter and, and, and driveway approaches being put in. I seen one on H Street where they put a section that was 13 feet by, by 20 feet, where they had a dirt driveway for it. No problem with regrading it back to what it was. No problem that they've got grass in there, putting grass back in, or putting irrigation system back in, cut it. Problem is, is these fences, some of them may not be chain link, some of them are block wall, and a bunch of extensive block work around. You needed to put some, some retaining walls in some area, because the grades have, grade differences, but there was an awful lot of changes done on this last contract, over 265 lineal feet of additional fencing, I think, I can't quote that, but that was paid for. This contract, I think, has 265 lineal feet of fence replacement in it. I mean, we've got to be careful what we do. You set a precedence here of handing it out to everybody there, the next contracts you've got to come along, people are going to be asking, I don't have, my driveway isn't finished already, I got dirt, or I got gravel, I want concrete. Put in the driveway approach in, put in the, put in the curb and gutter and stuff in, takes care of your water quality standards and stuff. But they need, the rest of, they want to fix up, they need to pay for that themselves, because it's only fair. Not, you're going to set a bad precedent. That's all I'm trying to say. And plus, you've got drawings, there shouldn't be that many changes. They should be correct. We can't possibly have this many different variations and quantities on curb and gutter, and, and amounts of quantities of concrete, when we have set plans and specs we paid for. That's what my concern is.
Thank you. Any more comments, questions? All right, I'll make a motion to approve item number 12, the award of construction contract in the amount of $969,000 to Hardy and Harper Incorporated for the Oak Valley Parkway and Zinnia Avenue Street Improvement Project, and to authorize the city manager to approve change orders not to exceed 25% of the contract amount.
I'll second with the change at this item 11, right?
12.
12, okay. I'm sorry. Yes, I'll second.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Lara?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Carroll?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes. All right, we'll move on to item 14. First reading of an ordinance amending Chapter 5.62 of the Beaumont Municipal Code, prohibition of medical dispensaries, cooperatives, and collectives, and amending Title V, Chapter 570 prohibiting mobile marijuana dispensaries and delivery.
Thank you, and I'm just grateful the previous group doesn't realize we're trying to ban catnip. Anyways.
You are on YouTube.
Well, so, evening, mayor and council, and so before you, again, as a proposal to just make some amendments to 5.62, 5.70, really, we already have a ban, but as you know, the voters approved Proposition 64, November 8, 2016, and because of that, some things that were, they were decriminalized. And so if we don't tighten the ordinance, then we could end up with some activity that we, that you may not want in the city. Most importantly, there's, there's some, just some language tightening, but something I certainly want to draw your attention to is the, the fact that the state law will allow, and we cannot control this, will allow indoor cultivation of a number of plants for the homeowner or the resident. But what we want to prohibit in this ordinance is the outdoor cultivation of the marijuana. And so if they have an accessory structure that's connected to their, or in association with their primary residence, then they can also have it in there as well. But the outdoor cultivation on private properties, where we've seen some, not in this city, but we monitor other cities to, to stay ahead of this, where there's been criminal activity up to, and including a homicide, just within a 15-minute drive of the city. And so I really encourage you to examine that portion of it, and, you know, what, what would happen is, you're just going to have people that don't want to take the time to, I mean, the same people that steal and do those types of activities, that want marijuana, take the chance of getting into somebody's yard, and they're often confronted by people who are, are probably armed. And so we want to limit that potential as well. And so the, the dispense, the, excuse me, the deliveries is pretty much just a language cleanup, we're just tightening the commercial delivery of marijuana, since that will also be legalized January 1st, 2018. And with that, I would submit the staff request.
One quick comment. I think this is the first issue I've seen regarding marijuana, where there's not the distinction between medical marijuana and recreational, which I'm happy this shows us, because I don't think there is a distinction anymore. But, yeah, I was concerned, and you answered my question, which was, if I had a, a separate, what you call it?
Accessory structure.
Yeah, accessory structure. I could still grow in there up to the six, I think it's six plants?
Correct.
Limit, okay. Any questions for the chief?
I got a couple. Just, on the transportation issue, I know the law allows them to transport plants or whatever, they have so many grams, or, that's not, the delivery thing is the commercial part of that, right?
Right, so we ban the delivery of medical marijuana and recreational marijuana, which you cannot ban those, the transportation, so if a neighboring jurisdiction, you know, if we're caught in the middle, and they, you know, cut through Beaumont to get onto the 10 or the 79 down to the Hemet Valley, you cannot, you know, set up a checkpoint and start taking people down for that.
And then, we didn't, permitting, did we talk about permitting at one time, issuing permits for that, or is that another discussion, or does the law not allow the permitting for indoor? I can't remember.
Are you maybe thinking about the rider bill to Prop 64 that we discussed, where there was an attempt to circumvent the city's ability to pass permit or...
Right.
That, that trailer bill was modified.
Okay, all right. Yeah, and that's all. Thank you.
I'm glad you guys brought up the issue about transportation. I was at a meeting last week with a number of mayors from other cities around here, and one of the mayors, I know I won't name the city or the mayor, was real excited, because they had just approved a whole bunch of buildings for, for growing and distribution. And he was also equally proud that they were not allowing any dispensaries or distributions within their own city. And I said to him, I said, well, wait a second, if you're so proud about all the money you're going to make, you know, why is it, why aren't you going to have the, those dispensaries in, in your own city? Why do those have to be in other cities, like with the transportation issue you're bringing up? And, and his response was sort of, you know, I don't want to put words in his mouth, but it was, well, we don't want that part of the problem here. So anyways, are we doing everything we can legally, as far as our limitations on marijuana here?
Yes. And mine, and the city attorney's opinion, that this is probably the strongest to date, and, and there's a lot of trailer bills out there, so this may not be the last we hear of this...
Right.
...issue, but this is the strongest to date that we could bring to you.
Okay. Any other questions, comments?
Chief addressed some of the concerns that I had in regards to growing outside of the single-family residence or an accessory structure on a residence, and other questions as far as processing marijuana. I'm, I'm good, I'm glad you're on top of this. Thank you very much, chief.
You're welcome.
I, so this is a first reading. So we hold a public hearing? I guess I need to hold a public hearing at 8:59? Did you want to speak? No? Okay. All right. So I'll close the public hearing at 8:59. And I'll move to approve the first reading of this ordinance.
I'll second it.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Lara?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Carroll?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes. All right, item 15, first reading of an ordinance of the city council of the city of Beaumont, California, adding Section 1548 of the Beaumont Municipal Code entitled Electrical Vehicle Charging Station Streamlined Permitting Process.
Good evening, mayor and council. In 2015, an assembly bill was adopted requiring building departments throughout the state of California to expedite the permit issuance process for electrical vehicle charging stations. Last year was the deadline for larger jurisdictions, over 200,000. This year, it's our turn, being a smaller jurisdiction. Our building department seen this coming quite a few years ago, so we've already got all the processes in place. Our permits are issued over the counter. We have a checklist that's posted on the website. We're part of the Western Riverside County Uniformity Plan, so we don't have any extra bells and whistles here in our city, so we move these through over the counter. I'm here for any questions.
Any questions, comments? Just a, how many have you issued?
In about the last five years, I think, I think we're up to about six.
Oh, wow. That's good, that's actually pretty good.
They're, they're not beating our doors down, as we can see.
Thank you. Without any other comments, I'll entertain a motion.
If you could open and close the public hearing?
I'm sorry, yes, I did, didn't I?
That was the last one.
That was the last one.
8:59, you opened and closed it. All right, I close it at 8:59.
That was a dispensary one.
All right. Jeez.
He's just testing you.
Thank you, Nicole, for keeping me on track.
Thank you.
Obviously, Mike is failing in his responsibilities. So item number 16, reimbursement of travel expenses to me. So I will leave the room.
We need to finish that motion, I'm sorry.
We need to open a close?
You started the motion for number 15, we didn't finish it.
Okay.
And then we'd follow up with a...
Oh, I was interrupted in the motion? Okay.
And I think, to be clear, you can put six of these in a detached structure, as long as it's not the open right. Wait, no, we're getting confused, sorry.
I move to approve the first reading of the ordinance on item 15.
I'll second.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Lara? Mayor Pro Tim Carroll?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes. Now, reimbursement of travel expenses, and I'll step down.
Oh, great.
We don't have to open a public hearing, do we, for this? I think so. Okay. The reimbursement of travel expenses to Mayor Lloyd White, the recommended council action is to improve the reimbursement request in the amount of $47.08.
I'll second. Is that the motion? Oh, okay.
You second?
I thought you made, I thought she made it, I couldn't tell. Okay.
I think that was a motion by...
Is that a motion?
Motion by Martinez, second by Lara.
Oh, okay.
Bye, Lara. Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Lara? Mayor Pro Tim Carroll?
Yes.
He's psychic. And I'll recuse myself from item number 17, reimbursement for my travel expenses.
All right. Any comments or questions? I'll move to approve item 17, reimbursement of travel expenses to Councilmember Julio Martinez.
I'll second.
Councilmember Laura?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Carroll?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes. I'll go first tonight, I have nothing to report. Mr. Martinez?
Both RCA and EDC were, did meet in July, so no report.
Mr. Laura?
I have nothing to report.
And Mrs. Carroll?
Nothing to report.
We'll move on to city treasurer's report.
I have nothing to report this evening.
And the city clerk report.
Nothing to report.
City attorney report.
Nothing to report.
City manager's report. Let me know when you're going to get to item number one.
Would you let me to defer that to the end, or do you want?
No, why don't you do that first?
Okay.
And I'll go ahead and step out of the room, since it has, since I have a home property with the issue that is being addressed here. Okay.
I put this on the item for update because there's been some degree of concern expressed within the community over the recent couple weeks, centers around the city maintaining some areas where there's no recorded, or recorded record of an existing easement or right-of-way, in, you know, particular landscape areas. This was addressed with council, probably, what, 2015, sometime at that point? Council at that time had directed staff to proceed forward with two specific areas to address that. Staff didn't do anything with it and just let it sit. And so from that time forward, there's been ongoing maintenance for those areas. Now, they're within rights of way, they're within areas where the city definitely was intended to maintain, you know, those areas. So that being said, I feel like we're still under that original council directive that had not been rescinded, so we as staff will proceed forward to try to get those issues resolved once and for all, to make sure we address that. But the two specific issues that were addressed back in 2015 affected dozens of lots and dozens of areas, and so we'll be talking to a lot of landowners about trying to go ahead and finalize the donation or contribution of those easements. So there may be costs associated with it, with survey costs and some other things that are out there, probably some legal expenses, but we'll, we do need to get those done. And there was clearly an intent of the city at the time, and it would have been standard practice for us to have accepted those things for maintenance. And I will say, we've been maintaining or, you know, some of these areas as early as 2007, so there's been ongoing maintenance, city irrigation systems, city watering, as well as all the other activities that go with that right-of-way maintenance for the last, you know, 10 years, going on 10 years now. So there's been a long history of maintenance within those areas. So just thought it was important, considering the concern that we expressed up there.
So the plan is to give back to the owner?
No, we need to, we need to finalize these easements.
Oh, okay.
And in the particular case along Brookside, those lots actually, there's warranty deeds that show that when those properties were purchased, that there's a, an area on the backsides of those lots that were withheld as landscape maintenance easements. And they were withheld by the developer, you know, and for whatever reason, we don't find that those easements were conveyed back over by the developer at some point. So whether that was the city's fault for not processing those and ensuring those got filed, I don't know. I don't know if it was the developer's fault, if it was our responsibility, but the bottom line is that that part wasn't followed up.
So you're in process of rectifying that?
Absolutely, absolutely. And so in these areas, though, I mean, clearly, in these two particular locations, you've got block retaining walls or block privacy screening walls along the backside of the street, so backside of lots along the street, steep berms that go down to a sidewalk to get to the street grate. And so there's no access gates, there clearly was no intention to have the landowners individually maintain those areas, and they, in many cases, can't access those. So, and it's in the city's best interest to accept and maintain those areas, so, you know, we need to take the step forward and get this resolved once and for all. It's been hanging out there way too long.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Todd, have we done anything, because it doesn't, typically, it's not a common thing that occurs, but have we done what we need to do on our end to ensure that this doesn't occur again on future development?
Yes. Yeah, and, you know, particularly with track maps, those types of things, we need to make sure that those easements are dedicated and called out at the time that the track map is being created.
Okay.
There's really no reason for them to be done by separate instrument.
Right.
It's just, it's adding another step, which again, and who knows how many other situations may be out there? We don't know. It may be hard for us to fully uncover all of that, but we have two significant cases that were identified that had specific council action that was never followed up on.
Okay, thank you. Todd's on it.
Okay. Okay, I'm back, we can move on.
Okay, one of the things that we've been working on since I've been here is really looking at finalizing city's multi-year financial model. And so that's a model that really goes out about 20 years in terms of financial forecasting. We got the rough draft, or that first draft in from Urban Futures last week, so we've just now in the process of really digesting that. We'll be setting a meeting up with Urban Futures, and staff will sit down and walk back through and finalize that document. So look forward to having that to present to council in the very near future. One of the key issues that, or key features, I guess, of the forecast is it does factor in a recession about every seventh year. So when you look at the forecast, they had forecasts that we would actually see a recession for this coming fiscal year, and the reality is, we just got the updated HDL report that showed the growth in our assessed value for this year, which were actually up 6% on AV. So, you know, so there's already some good news that we can kind of begin to roll in. So there's some fine tuning to do there, but we'll be presenting that to you within the next couple council meetings to give you an update and show you what that looks like. But I will tell you that I think the assumptions are conservative moving forward in terms of revenue, and especially concerning the city's growing cost to maintain current levels of service. And what it does show you is, if you look at the current levels of service and maintain that over time, that the revenues are outpacing the cost of expenses, which is critical because, you know, we need to look at West Side Fire Station, there's other things that we're beginning to program and move forward. And with that, we've got CIP that also is something that needs to be, begin to be contemplated as we move forward with that. So all that's coming together, and we'll be presenting to you very soon, but was pretty excited that we've really made that next step. And we've stopped talking about this as a recovery plan or as a plan to sustainability because council has hit sustainability. So we've already achieved that financial stable platform. This now is truly a multi-year projection, so this is really a future look into resourcing and needs moving forward. So entirely different type of analysis, and it's good news, I think, for the community. At least it gives you an idea of the kind of level of resources you have moving forward. And final thing is, and we talked about it tonight with our agenda item on the tax rate enrollment, or taxes rules, but we have finalized and we're funded for the first of the two refi programs that we did. We are executing final contracts tonight, I think. We've got some volunteers roped in to signing a ton more contracts, but that'll finish out the final financing. But the first set is, we got notice today that the funds are now wired over and they're in the trustee's hands, so that's done. And then hopefully in the next week or so, we'll have the final bit of those dollars wired over and handled. So that's moving forward. The other issue is, it doesn't stop here, so we have the next round that we're starting to look at in terms of what qualifies for refinancing for next year, and to begin looking at what we do moving forward. So it's a living, breathing program that will be evaluated annually as we move forward.
I have a question about the, so you're thinking about how we're going to communicate that out in terms of the application to the individual people who will end up benefiting from this?
Yes.
Okay.
That's a leading question.
Like, instead of a negative surprise, maybe a positive surprise at some point? I'm sure you've already thought through on a plan.
Well, we, with the budget this year, one of the positions we created was our public information officer position, and so with that, for that position, there's a growing list of things that we're going to have that position do. So we'll be launching those proactive messaging efforts moving forward in the very near future, but this will be part of that. One of the things we talked about was wanting to try to provide some sort of communication mechanism to allow people to know what's happening in my part of the city.
Sure.
So those types of things that are things we want to kind of build up and begin to send proactive messaging out through social media, through, you know, other routine media platforms. We really want to do it through our official city communication mechanisms. They really need to come out of the official city platforms.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, the negative messages travel so fast, I'd like to see the positive messages traveled even better.
Absolutely. So that's all I have for you.
And all the people that were here for the cat thing, we're actually here to celebrate the refunding of, refinancing of the CFPs.
Well, that's a big day, and I tell you that it is a good day for our community that we got to talk about, you know, routine kind of city business. I mean, we were talking about, you know, the feral cat problem, we're talking about, you know, yeah, building new roads, and a discussion about whether we're doing that the right way. I mean, those are really great things to talk about.
All right, anything, are you all done, Mr. Pardon?
Yes, sir.
Okay, sure enough.
Sure enough.
Sure enough.
Let you all go now.
Okay. We'll adjourn at 9:17.